In order, please stand for a moment of silence and pledge with Ms. Akri.
For our moment of silence, I would like to reflect on a great finish to our 24-25 school year for our students and staff in the Enfield Public School System. So I would like to say kudos to the students, teachers, and the staff who have worked very hard all year long. And now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, fire evacuation. In the unlikely event of a fire, you can exit out the back doors, the chambers, and out to the grass in the parking lot, or you can go out these side doors, first left, down the stairs, and out to the bottom parking lot. Kathy, can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalnun?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Gauss?
Here.
Mr. Coburn?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Chairwoman Riley?
Present.
Chairwoman Riley, may I make a motion?
Yes.
Before we get started, can I make a motion to move item 11A up to 6C towards the end of this next section?
All right, motion made by Mr. Ryder. Seconded by Ms. Cushman. Just kind of show of hands in favor? Nine in favor, not against. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so Board, guests, Enfield High School student athlete.
Yes, Mr. O'Connell, we're going to welcome to the table Athletic Director Corey O'Connell and High School Wrestling Coach Jason Flynn. We're just gonna, I'll just gonna lead it off, and we're just gonna start off with excellence. So thank you for the suggestion to be bringing him forward and turn it over to you, Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Today, we celebrate the accomplishments of Ethan Bonaducci. Now, while I see him from afar on the mat, Coach Flynn obviously has seen him and developed him into an amazing student athlete. So I'm gonna give the mic to Coach Flynn to give you more details on his, on his amazing accomplishments. The list is long, and then we'll get a little present here at the end.
Good evening. So first, I'd like to thank the Board of Ed for taking the time to recognize Ethan. I'd like to thank the Athletic Director, our Superintendent, and all the support we get to help us make us successful. This year, Ethan had a historic season, not only just for the town of Enfield, but also in terms of the state of Connecticut. So this year, Ethan, his career record, so he, the historical part is he has the most wins in Enfield Eagles history. He had 140 wins over four years. This season, he went 51-0, and this is the fourth best season in the history of Connecticut wrestling, not just Enfield, but the history of Connecticut wrestling. It's also the first Enfield wrestler, whether Falcon, Raider, or Eagle, to complete a non-defeated season in the New England air. Ethan also was a Double L Champ, so this is the second time we've had a Double L Champ in Eagles history. He was a State Open Champ, which is the second time we've had a State Open Champ in Eagles history. He's one of eight in Enfield Athletics for the wrestling program. There's only seven other people who have won a State Open Champ. That's Eagles, Raiders, Falcons. And this year, he accomplished something that no other athlete, as far as I can find, in the history of Enfield, not just wrestling, not just track, in the history of Enfield had done, and Ethan won a New England championship this year. So Ethan is not only the best 126-pound wrestler in the state of Connecticut, he is the best 126-pound wrestler in all of New England. So we've come here tonight to recognize him.
That's awesome.
I'll just present Ethan with his banner, like we said, we'll hang it up this summer. Stand it up there.
Wow, right.
Like I said, we'll get this hung up this summer and let you and your family know what it is, pictures.
Memorialized, right?
That's awesome.
Ethan, I noticed they started to hand you the microphone, and then they quickly took it away. And I'm not exactly sure why that was, but is there anything that you wanted to add or anything by that, before that? And I'm sure we're gonna turn it over to the Board of Ed members.
I really appreciate you guys taking the time out of your day to recognize me and my accomplishments. I really appreciate it.
You earned it, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody, go ahead, Ms. LeBlanc.
Hi, I just wanted to say welcome. You are, have you have joined a legacy of wrestling in the town of Enfield. And I know you're too young to remember, but back in the late 80s and 90s, wrestling was huge, especially at Fermi. Did you ever have an opportunity to meet Ben Alex?
Yes.
You did. He, if, he would be so proud. He is beaming down on you because wrestling was his whole life, and we've seen that in the, in the wrestling room that they put at Fermi. I think it's just, you, you seem to like be the bridge that's kind of bridging the Fermi and the Raiders together and really starting a new legacy of the Enfield Eagles. Your accomplishments are above and beyond, I think, probably what any of us could expect. I just have a question. I have a couple of questions. Coach Flynn, didn't you wrestle 126?
It was 125. The class has changed, but yes, 125.
Yeah, so, you know, I believe Coach Flynn's name is up there. Some of your former coaches have names up on the Ben Alex wall, and now your name's gonna be up there. What are your plans after graduating?
I'm going to college for wrestling.
Really? Where are you gonna go?
Bridgewater State University.
Bridgewater State. That's a great campus. If I can give you any advice, Mom and Dad, any advice, having college athletes myself, it's gonna be very different, but it's gonna be worth it, and you're gonna be valued, even on days that you don't feel you're valued. So hang in there. It's gonna be tough for all of you, but I have no doubt in my mind you're gonna do really well wrestling at Bridgewater State. So congratulations, and thank you for coming tonight. And I can't wait to keep tabs on you when you're wrestling at Bridgewater. So, thank you.
Ms. Pickett? Oh, okay.
Just wanted to say congratulations.
Ms. Akri?
Congratulations, Ethan. Wow, what an accomplishment. State and New England. I just have a quick question. Did you get any scholarships for wrestling at Bridgewater?
Well, I mean, yeah, I got a little bit of money off, so not like a full ride, but, you know, they definitely, it was definitely like a choice of looking at all the schools to definitely, like, the big thing, a part of it, and I talked with my parents about it, was the money deficit. So it definitely came down to, like, two colleges, and like, I lowered it down, lowered it down, until like my final option. Not even just, even if it was money, I even, like, stayed at the school, and I, I felt like I could be there. And the way I made history in Enfield, they, like, also have a way to make, I could see myself making history there, to be a first one up there as well, to be an All-American or a regional, you know?
Yeah. Mr. Coburn?
Awesome. All right. Thank you, guys, for coming in. Congratulations, Ethan. I'm definitely pumped every time we have, like, good news coming out of Enfield and athletics. I'm all about it. Ethan, I just, I guess I got one question for you, just because you're coming at the, you know, the end of your Enfield Public Schools career, and obviously been wrestling for a long time. Like, what got you into wrestling? Like, what was your moment that you kind of like got into it, and you're like, hey, I'm gonna stick with this, and I'm gonna ride it out?
At least turn the table mic on, that's, just so everybody can hear you at home.
I definitely said, one of my friends, he said to me, if I wanted to do wrestling, and I said an inappropriate comment about it, and then I just, I got into it. And, yeah, it wasn't just myself. I saw, like, everyone, like, my coach, my teammates, and they really, like, bought into me. Like, they saw, like, the potential in me. Like, they saw how I could get better and the hard work, like, every match that I lost, or every match that I won, that I can prove off of it. Every time when I lost or won a match, like, my coach would sit there literally and, like, go over this with me, go over this with me. And the way, every time he spoke to me when I got off the mat, it was like, his words were, like, spoken into me, not just, like, mentally, but into my soul. And I just, and just my teammates, too, the way they spoke to me. If I lost or won a match, it just, it drove me to be better, not just that year, but the next year, and the next year, and the next year, progressing and progressing.
Oh, that's awesome. I appreciate the honesty and kind of like the candidness. And I was gonna ask, too, kind of like, like a follow-up, but I think you already hit the nail on the head. Like, did you ever have a moment where you were, like, down, and you had lost, and you're like, hey, maybe this is not for me? Like, you know, I know a lot of times with sports, you know, people get tired, they want to quit, but obviously, the big thing is kind of overcoming that and building that resiliency. Obviously, you've done it. So besides, like, the peers and the support and kind of like proving it to yourself, was there anything else that kind of helped you through it? Or was it just a combination of all that that...?
I'd probably say a big, it was definitely my father. I'd say, like, I don't know how many times, like, not even just wrestling season, but even in the offseason, I'd lose to Pennsylvania place winners, New York place winners, and I'd just get down. I'd say to my father, I want to go home. I want to go home. I just, I don't want to finish the tournament. But I showed the grit in myself, and I would literally, like, fight back from, like, nine matches. And that's very hard to do. But, and then, once I, like, started beating place winners and New York place winners, Pennsylvania place winners, I saw in myself, die right when the season was about to start, that, that this was gonna be the season. I said to my coach, I said to my family, I said to every single person, I'm like, I'm so excited for the season. I'm so excited. I'm pumped. I'm excited. Like, I couldn't stop shaking. Like, I was so excited.
No, that's awesome, man. I'm glad you had the motivation. You carried through. I mean, you did everything. Obviously, thank you to Coach Flynn, Director O'Connell. Like, you guys, you guys did great. You had a great sport. I mean, and you made it. Now you can look back and say, hey, you know, I'm glad I didn't walk away. I'm glad I didn't quit. You know, now you're just kind of looking what's forward. So obviously, for like the next generation of athletes, you know, hopefully, it's something that inspires them. Like, you know, younger kids, obviously, like, you know, you try things out, you don't do well, you want to quit, but you're never gonna get better with that outlook. And obviously, you captured that. You're kind of the essence of that, and hopefully, we can continue to, like, drive that. And, you know, I know athletics are only a part of, like, student achievement, but as we talk about, you know, like, visiting a graduate and going on to that, just, just that resiliency and stuff like that. You know, you, you see it a lot in sports, but even academics, anywhere. If you're not doing good, push through. It's only gonna get better. So, awesome. Thank you.
I also, like, wanted to say, like, I also, like, see myself as a big impact to the younger versions of the kids that are now on the wrestling team. When I accomplish my goals, they are now doing, like, one of my club's fisheye, and they're, like, wanting to get better. They even come to me for advice, literally, like, oh, I want to be a state champ, or this and that. I even drive one of my teammates. I say to him, I'm like, beat my goals. Beat what I do, what I couldn't do. I couldn't go to NHSEAs, which was Nationals. I really wanted to go to that and show my talent of what, to possibly become an All-American. And I said to him, I'm like, you can become that. I want you to beat all those records on top of that. I want to see you succeed. And every single kid that comes over my house or whatever, I tell them, I encourage every single one of them to come to my house, have a mat, workout, ball flex, like, everything. I got all this stuff, literally, sweat and everything. And I give that credit to my father. Literally, you go in the garage, tallies everywhere. I lost my match at states. That's why my story is unique. I lost at states on February 24th, and that whole day, I didn't stop getting off the mat, wrestling, working out, anything, nonstop. Every time I went on the bike, I'd look straight at the wall, and I'd imagine, like, a shadow of a one. And I said to myself, I want to be number one every single time. And when I'd get down, I'd be like, oh, I don't want to do it today. My father was there to say to me, come on, let's go. Let's go, go to the gym, do something. I just, I stuck with it.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Mr. Gauss?
Well, congratulations, like everybody else says. I have a few questions. Has your wrestling career in high school positively impacted your academic career?
Sorry, can you say that one more time?
Did you do better in school because you're a good wrestler?
Actually, yeah. I consider, I definitely, if I knew that I was gonna definitely get colleges hitting on my line 24/7, nonstop, that I think I would have did better, maybe my freshman sophomore year, and not, not really slack off, but more like stay focused. Like now, I'm like, more like playing catch-up, because it's like, now I'm getting high honors. I have a 3.8 GPA. So it's like, you know, I gotta make that, show the colleges that I'm like, all right, hey, I'm doing better. And I stayed a hall, all high honors this whole year, so, yeah.
And I'd imagine that's the same advice you'd give eighth graders that are going to start in high school next year. That's awesome. And, and another thing, if your family's willing, for any kind of achievements like that, it's not just, just you, it's your family standing behind you and helping you. Would you care to introduce them?
Oh, yeah.
Hi, I'm Father. Hi, I'm his father, Paul Bonaducci.
His mother, Justania.
Sister Janaya.
All right.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Anybody else? Ethan, congratulations. The varsity Jack Yugunan is amazing, amazing. The things that you have done are, are off the charts. I don't think any of us could be prouder. Your parents, they're, they're extremely proud, obviously. Thank you for being an amazing athlete, and obviously, an amazing kid. And hey, you know, you could come back after your doma college and be the wrestling coach after, you know, after he retires, maybe. That'd be great. We'd love to have you back. But thank you. Congratulations, and don't stop shooting for the stars, kid.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here tonight.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, vision of a graduate.
Okay, let's welcome Assistant Superintendent Curriculum and Instruction, Michelle Middleton. We have JFK Principal Sarah Brown and Humanities Director Joel Siney. And they're just gonna give you a quick update regarding the vision of the graduate work that we've been doing throughout the year and next steps that we'll need to continue to do.
Thank you. Before we move on to the presentation, I just want to, on the screen, are the names of the other steering committee members who've been doing a lot of this work with us, and that's Aaron Clark, the principal of high school, Chris Ponte, our Director of STEAM, and Dave White, our Director of School Counseling. So just wanted to point them out. There you go.
So, our work started back in the 23-24 school year. This has been a process that has included the entire community, teachers, administrators, and our students, starting with introductory activities and focus groups. The most important thing, I think, the steering committee thought we could do in this process is include as many voices as possible in building what would become the vision of a graduate. So that groundwork took some time gathering that information, which led us to sharing this kind of large gathering of info, all these ideals and thoughts from the community and from our staff members to the Administrative Council. And then the work began for kind of taking all of this and narrowing it down into digestible chunks that the community could wrap their heads around and that our students could understand all the way through their time in Enfield Public Schools. So then, throughout the course of the 24-25 school year in winter, the Administrative Council met just about monthly, and each month, we did activities related to the vision of a graduate, whether it was brainstorming or getting different levels together for what the K2 or pre-K2 leadership thought their students needed intermediate, middle school, and high school. So you can imagine, that took quite a bit of time to get all that together, which led us to the spring of this school year, and finally, taking all of that and putting it together in one acronym, which is gonna look like a pretty simple term, but there is so many layers under that, as you, you'll see as we go through the presentation. And I think you're really gonna like it, based on what we just saw. So then, we had to develop the descriptions that went even deeper, beyond just those kind of surface terms that Sarah's gonna share in a minute. So that's what led us to this point here, and we're not done. The work continues.
Thank you. So we did come up with the acronym of CLIME, and I have to be honest, the amount of feedback that we got from stakeholders and then just putting it all together, it was, it took a really long time to really think about what words would fit in perfectly in this acronym of CLIME. So we were able to narrow it down to collaboration and communication, lifelong learning literacy, innovation and problem solving, mindset for success, and then building character and community. And we felt that that really was able to be seen at every single level, from pre-K all the way up to 12th grade. And then, what we really started to look at recently was those descriptors of those broad skills, and like, really, like, they're like buckets, if you will, of what can we put into those buckets to really show collaboration or communication. So right now, you know, we thought about different things, what that would look like. So having people be able to work effectively with, you know, conveying their ideas, listening to others, and really just how we communicate and collaborate to have those shared goals with one another. For lifelong learning and literacy, how we ask questions to one another, how we learn new things, and how we're using reading and writing to understand everything around us. Really making sure that we have students learning how to think creatively and finding solutions to problems, trying new ideas and that risk-taking, so that they can learn from their mistakes, and having that mindset for success, making sure that our students and our staff are staying positive. They keep on trying when things are hard, and they're taking responsibility from themselves and then reflecting, so that they can set goals, so they can continue to learn and grow as a learner. And then, building that character and community. We really wanted to make sure that students are showing their kindness and honesty, and that, you know, we're displaying what respect really looks like within our schools.
So that's the work that we've done so far. These are the next steps that will take us through the next few years. This is not a one-year project here. The first thing we need to do, and we're working on this already, we did some work with the Administrative Council, is to identify the associated skills for each category. It's, you know, what skills would be associated with communication to show us that students have that, have that ability. Mr. Coburn just used the word a little while ago, resilience. That is obviously going to be a word that fits into many of those different buckets, as we've been calling them, that you saw on the previous slides. After that, the first thing in the fall is we're gonna roll out the acronym to staff, students, families, and community. We have to, I want it, we're gonna roll it out, so then we can develop a visual depiction of our vision of a graduate. That's gonna be a student-involved process, I envision. We've been throwing things back and forth about, you know, there'll be a product that will represent it, like, community-wide, but there may also be other products done at different levels that represent it along the way. This is definitely a pre-K12 vision. We are looking for students to be able to develop these skills and show these skills all the way through. We also need to align curriculum and assessments of vision of a graduate. First thing we're going to do, we have to identify what we already are doing that contributes to students learning these skills as, as what we're already doing, and then figure out where we need to add extra, what departments need more, what assessments can change, what skills aren't being represented enough, how can students show their learning in a different way. So that's obviously why this is not a one-year project. And then, create grade band endpoints for each skill. Like I said, this is a pre-K12, so we've been having conversations. We actually saw in our training, one district had, like, a roadmap, and at the end of grade two, there was a demonstration of learning for all second graders, and at the end of grade five, at the end of grade eight, and then different places in high school. And, you know, where our natural transitions go, we thought that that would be something that we'd like to incorporate in. There's gonna be rubrics that are going to have to be developed and rolled out and shared with students, and student feedback on all of this. So that's kind of where we're going over the next few years. And that's actually our presentation.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody have any questions, comments? Ms. Pickett?
You know, I love this work. I think, one is, I'm excited to see. I know I missed the Curriculum Subcommittee where you did a preview of this, so I'm happy to get it tonight. I do have a couple wonders, considerations, and you know, I always have a lot to say. So, one is, I wonder how we will use this? Like, will it be a report card measure? Will it be something that we will be consistently, and you don't need to answer this, but just thinking critically about, how do we not just make it an acronym on a wall, but something that is talked about, and we are assessing, and we are looking at? Because I think that supports family and community engagement. I think these are skills that we could all say, like, we agree to and would hope to see in learners. So I think it's a nice kind of common foundation of what we hope to see in kids. I like hearing you talk about alignment and looking at what we're already doing. I would suggest we start with looking at places like our Health and Sex SubCurriculum. We teach some of these concepts, like explicitly in those places, our Library-Media Curriculum, like media literacy, digital citizenship. And then, I think our Academic Standards in Curriculum. I think there's probably gonna be lots of overlap that we can just pull from Academic Standards to define some of these.
Absolutely.
I think assessment's going to be the interesting thing, because I, we have to have acknowledged that this work is deeply connected to culture and values and beliefs about students and learners. So thinking about how do we break down, what do these skills look like in various grade levels, and how are we doing that in a developmentally and culturally responsive way? Even the language we chose, I mean, I think these words aren't, are pretty universally used. However, when we're talking about defining things with respect, respect is a very large term that we throw around that means and looks different to different people. So just some considerations about, especially those defining pieces. And then, later on tonight, we're gonna be looking at some school climate policy, and I think this is really a foundational element to that, when we think about what are some behavior expectations, what is it that we're looking to shape in students. Being able to say, here's what we're looking to do, and here's how we do it, is a really helpful thing. So, thank you.
Dr. Kalnun?
One of the, the things that you had mentioned that I thought was really interesting was, and I think this is a great idea, I mean, it's really a great initiative, but you talked about community involvement. And, and I know this is a very general question, it's hard to answer, but how specifically do you plan to engage the community in, in developing this vision?
We've started, we started at the school level with families. We had some focus groups. We have talked about ways to get more engagement, and that's something we've been brainstorming over the past year, is to how do we get more stakeholders of the community involved, whether, so we are discussing that on different levels, as to bringing in different community partners to have the conversations with, kind of like when we do the Head Start Self-Assessment, that type of thing. So bringing in the community partners, putting out surveys, different things like that. So we're trying to get increased engagement in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Cushman?
I know one of the, in the policy or the Curriculum Committee, we had a conversation about the portrait of a learner.
Yes.
And I just didn't know if that was something that you're still exploring, because the vision of the graduate kind of lends itself to people thinking of, like, high school seniors.
We, we actually are still, and I actually didn't, I, I was just thinking that I never mentioned that. One of the things we're also talking about is, you know, Mr. Macio and I have talked about, does it have to stay vision of a graduate? Because we've seen districts do Portrait of a Learner. We feel that that is more representative of what we're trying to do. And actually, I believe this gentleman sitting next to me pointed out that we have lifelong learning, so it shouldn't be a graduate. It should continue on. So we, we are having that conversation.
Hi.
Hold on, Dean's gonna go first.
Going along with your map analogy, now, what happens if somebody starts doing a little bushwhacking and doesn't necessarily end up where, where they need to be when it's time for their assessments? What, are there provisions in here to kind of hop back and get back on that trail?
There would, first of all, the way this is going to be, the way I envision, I think we all envision it, is it's not like a one-time assessment of the learning. There's multiple opportunities. Part of this process, too, is student choice built in there, performance assessments. So if that is part of it, there should be an opportunity for another demonstration of learning. So yes, we, we, it should not just be a one-and-done.
Oh, I understand that, and, and I understand another demonstration, but they're not gonna demonstrate any progress unless somewhere where they've lost their path.
Right.
That path is taken up again.
Yes.
And brought back to that waypoint.
Yes. These, yes, because the, the goal is, it's kind of just like academics, too. The goal is that every single year, they're going to be working on developing these. And if, you know, it's going to be visual in the classroom, the formative assessments or whatever, teachers will reteach, teachers will give more practice. So we will, I'm sure we'll have to develop a process for that.
No, I understand. I'd like, just like to see stuff that's more holistically. I'd just like to see stuff that's more holistically kind of developed, rather than just a, we know that we do this, this kid is going to do exactly what we expect, because we all know that's not going to happen.
No, there will be some sort of
Right.
process and product.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Pickett?
The other piece that I was going to mention, so kind of to that, your question there, I think it's definitely connected to some of the MTSS work around students who are struggling with demonstrating some of these skills, how do we support them as learners? And I was going to say, as a consideration, and I'm sure it's already come up in some conversation, at least in the elementary schools, I know we were a previous implementing PBIS pretty well, so there's lots of acronyms around. So thinking about how do we roll this out intentionally, especially in our schools that have been doing some explicit teaching, have some like, we're, I'm in Enfield Street B, you know. So thinking about, it doesn't mean that that stuff has to go away, but how do we intentionally maybe think about acronyms, think about behavior expectations, and consistent language, I do think is important. So just a consideration. And then I heard about images. I have lots of awesome pictures of kid, young kids at Enfield Street, like overlooking the high school behind them. There's some really cute forecasting pictures, just saying, if you need some images.
I remember those pictures, thank you.
One other piece of information is that vision of a graduate, or whatever we end up calling it, is embedded within the NEASK accreditation. So we'll be getting feedback from NEASK as we go through the accreditation at the middle school or the high school, so we can see how, what we have within our, embedded in our curriculum and for assessment, and how that is looking, and get that critique. So I think that's another way that we'll be getting that feedback to make sure we really have those checkpoints within our plan.
Good point.
Anybody else?
Because I remember, I believe I remember correctly, when we were in the curriculum meeting, basically, this vision is going to shape the way that what we have for curriculum and the school culture that comes around it, that's really what this whole vision of a graduate or portrait of a learner is, is going to shape all of that.
It should, yes. Because what we want the students, those big buckets that we talked about, that should be a part of their instructional, actually, their school experience, instructional, behavioral, all of that, as they go consistently through. So it's going to be important to talk to the lower levels and find out what the age-appropriate expectations are, and then how does that move on when you go to the next level, how does that move on when you go to the next level? What does it look like if you're in kindergarten? What does it look like when you're in eighth grade? Those type of things. Because a lot of this, some of this is the social behavioral pieces, too. You know, we talk, so some of it is mindset, mindset's part of that, that all builds it. It's the whole person.
Yep.
It's not just the academic piece.
Yes. And Amanda, you should have seen some of the photos that evening that they had of like kids within kids up to like, it was really cool. Yeah, I know, these guys are, these guys are cranking away on this, and I'm really excited for all this work that you guys are doing, and I can't wait to see it as it progresses more. Thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We are going to move on to 11, yep, so 6C, which is going to be Diane Edwards from Nutrition Services. Hello?
Hello?
All right.
Hi.
Are you doing the introduction?
I think she already introduced you, but I'll be happy to introduce you, Diane.
I didn't know if we were both reading those little memos.
That's okay. So Diane's going to come forward, and enclosed in your packet, you have some information regarding the healthy food certification statement, something that the board needs to do on an annual basis, whether or not you are agreeing to or not agreeing to that certification. And really, Ms. Edwards has spent a lot of time looking at in terms of reimbursement rates, and what are all the different qualifications and standards, and what we are meeting and what we are not meeting, and what, if you choose to approve the certification, what that would mean for the district, as well as if you did not, as I believe you have done in the past. But I'll let Diane explain a little bit of the differences for her and why she's making the recommendation to approve.
I think you had received the memo that I had put in your packet, that the state of Connecticut requires that we complete the certification statement, certifying that all food items sold to students will meet or not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards, a CNS, and be eligible for the additional funding of 10 cents per meal. I'm recommending it this year regarding the sale of foods to students during the school day, which would be vote one, along with the exemption, which is vote two, which allows for the sale of foods and beverages to students after the school day. So that would take care of any kind of fundraising you were doing, or sales at plays and events, but it would not let you like sell something to a student if they were having a rehearsal or, or a club meeting or things like that. So currently, we meet the nutrition standards for foods and beverages sold to students because we adhere to our mandated school wellness policy. So there's really not going to be any change if we accept the healthy food certification to that. Food sold to students after the school day will not be restricted if we do the exemption. Therefore, no significant changes to the sale of food or beverages during or after the school day if both votes are accepted. And we can only accept the second vote if we accept the first vote first, right? Because if that's a yes, then we can move on to the exemption. The funding's going to be used for the Nutrition Services Department. We'll use that to offset any further increases in the cost of meals to students. As you know, expenses are going up all the time. We haven't had a, our last increase for school lunch prices was in 2016. Was looking at increasing prices to 2020, but then COVID came, and then we got a lot of additional funding from the COVID for those three years. So we haven't had to really look at that until now, again, when we're starting to. All that funding kind of went away. I don't foresee us getting any funding for next year. The state's getting really tight with that. So this is a time for me to look at and say, well, how do I get additional funds so that I don't have to raise prices as much? And this would be one way that I could do that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? I know that we have a lot. Mr. Rider?
Why this year is your recommendation opposite of what I've done for eight years or 14 years or 10 years? I know we always voted no on this because, and I want to make sure I know all the reasons, but a few of the reasons were so we could still do like candy grams at Valentine's Day, or, or so like we could sell a PTO. We as a PTO dad, as a PTO parent, as somebody fundraising to offset costs for field trips and things of that nature. Those were some of like the headlines of why we voted no to say yes. Could you just tell us what's changed?
Well, the first thing is needing the funding to not increase prices as much as we would. So that was the first thing. So then I looked at, well, what would this affect at this point? And our wellness policy, which is mandated by the state, is very strict. And now we have a triennial assessment that the state requires we fill out to look at the wellness policy. So I had done the triennial assessment, and I looked, and I said, well, it's really not going to affect anything that we're doing during the school day. We're not doing those fundraisers and actually selling to the students. If we're doing a fundraiser, the only thing we have to do to keep it in compliance is to have that, the candy or whatever be given after the school day, you know, off-site of the school. So like the butter breads was a good example of that. Like, if you wanted to sell the butter breads during the day, you could sell them, but the parents would have to receive the product, not give it to the student, to have them take home with them.
No, that's true, because most of the fundraisers happen at the younger ages, and I wouldn't send a third grader home with five frozen pizzas for Little Caesar's. But, but what about, so you keep saying we, so you're talking about the school district. We, the school district, wouldn't be selling food during the day that wasn't in the cafeteria, et cetera. But we, the larger school family of like PTOs and such, do use some of these things as fundraisers. So I'm just trying to, it's just a game changer for us, who've been doing this for a long time, because we just never voted this way, so.
Okay. So, so if you're doing a fundraiser, be a little more specific on which fundraiser, and I can see.
Well, like specifically, like a lot of the elementary schools, and I'll say K through five schools, and even at the middle school, JFK, they'll do like a candy gram, where like, you know, you pay a dollar and then, you know, a student that you like, or a teacher that you like, or whatever, you know, friends of yours, like during open house, parents would like fill them out, and it would be delivered to their kids the next day, you know? Whether it was a Hershey kiss and a note, or whatever. But that didn't always happen after school. I mean, that would happen during the school day for students to purchase. The sidebar of a parent could fill it out during an open house was a nice convenience, but I'm just, it's those, and they, they're little, but they, they could mean a lot to the Hazardville Memorial PTO if they raised four or 500 bucks selling candy grams, you know, a dollar a student, 400 kids, it adds up. So I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to get a, be beyond the headlines, just trying to wrap my head around this.
Well.
Because those are the questions that I'm getting.
Sure. In the wellness policy, if you look at it, you shouldn't be giving those kinds of things to the students during the day, candy, things like that. If we could divert it to have it to be something other than candy, those things can still happen. It could be maybe a small stuffed animal, or some, you know, some other kind of thing that's not candy. There's a whole list of foods that are acceptable that they could do for the fundraiser, and I'd be more than happy to help anybody, you know, look at those and see if those would.
Yeah, if I could get that list, that would be a good starter, because we're, we're just changing something that we've always done, and I'm just asking why.
You know, there's like whole grain pretz, you know, the pretzel packs, there's cookies. I sell cookies that, that meet those requirements at the JFK and for high schools that are very popular. You know, we could incorporate that into the K through five and have that be their treat. So I think we could, you know, I'd be the district contact person, so I'd be more than happy to work with anybody that wanted to still do some kind of food product.
Yep.
And, you know, hopefully, you know, make it work for them.
And this only affects the school day, not like?
Just the school day, yeah.
Okay, so if there's no school on Election Tuesday in our town specifically, and then like there's certain people have fundraisers at the ballot boxes, and they sell their cookies and things, okay? All right, those are my main questions.
Well, the high school, like the sports teams do the Krispy Kreme fundraisers.
Yep.
And then they show up first thing in the morning to pick up their order.
And picks them up, the parent?
The coaches.
The coaches.
And that's a very popular fundraiser at Enfield High. For the sports teams, it makes a lot of money. So they can't do that anymore.
When do they, when do they do it? They sell during the day?
Well, no, the kids preorder it, and then the coaches go and get it. Like, when they're fresh out of the oven, drive down to Moegon, and they bring them back, and then the kids have, pick up their orders.
During the day?
Yeah.
During the school day? Okay.
And they're high schoolers, so they're eating them during the day.
Yeah.
I think that it's very impactful for options for the higher grades.
If they're, so here's what, you can give to students any food, but you can't sell it to them. So how's the money going, how is the sale going? So do they pay when they receive it?
No, before.
They pay before, yeah.
They preorder it, and then the coaches.
Through, through a student, like booster club, like football, or, you know, whichever whatever the sport is, yeah.
So if I can try to, I'll attempt to say it in a different way. The student themselves is not purchasing the Krispy Kreme doughnut in said fundraiser. Somebody else is purchasing it, and it's being, I guess, handed to the student by the coach?
Right, but also other students are buying from that student. So they preorder from that student.
So that portion, if I'm hearing you correctly, would not be able to occur.
Yeah, it would be like if Izzy was selling the Krispy Kremes, and Liv wanted them, then Izzy's going to go pick it up, and she's going to give it to Liv during the day.
Right, so that would be the hangup, is the student, in that scenario, Izzy could not purchase because now she's buying it, right? Because it's during the day.
Liv couldn't, she would be selling them, Liv would be purchasing them.
Whoever was doing it, the student during the school day could not be doing the purchasing.
Correct.
During the school day, sorry.
But they don't purchase, they pre-purchase.
During the school day.
They just can't receive what they purchased.
Correct.
So they could give the Krispy Kreme donuts after school to any kid, and they could eat them right there?
After the school day.
After the school day.
When they're cold. I just think asking people to do like candy grams and stuff, and then having to go pick them, pick them up after school does not make any logical sense at that point in time. You're not going to have parents that are readily available to do that kind of stuff. I'm like Scott, I don't agree with it. I think, I want to know why now. I think that there's a broader spectrum of students that are actually, or sports teams or clubs, that are actually more impacted than is being realized.
Do we have a financial impact? So you mentioned it's 10 cents more a meal we get reimbursed? So have we projected like what that reimbursement will be?
Based on meals from last year, it'd be about 40,000. So that would, and we look at that, that's, it's going to help to offset an increase in prices for school lunches if we do it that, you know, if we decide to do this. I mean, is there any other way we can help, you know, the, them do this fundraising that would fit within those guidelines?
Unfortunately, the sports teams are constantly fundraising for things that the district can't provide.
Do they, do they sell them during lunch, at lunchtime? Because there is some regulations with that, yeah.
I think.
We have both of the student rep, their hands up, so it might be, yeah.
I'll be, I'll be quick, too, because Ms. Pickett hit the first part of my question, and I remember when you were, you kind of briefed us this during the Budget Committee. So I know, yeah, you talked about the projected revenue if we do it, and it's 10 cents per meal, but I wanted to clarify, because I don't think I asked you then, so is that all register sales 10 cents, or is that only the students that are charged for lunch? Because I know we have a significant portion with free and reduced lunch. So is that 10 cents that would be getting back, cover all meals sold, or only like paid meals?
All meals, all meals sold.
All meals, okay.
Yeah.
So that would be like the final number, to the best of our knowledge, would be that increased revenue of about the 40,000, if we did this. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that and then mention it publicly. Thank you.
Oh, I also wanted to point out that for, like you guys said, a lot of our clubs, we do sell food, and if we didn't sell food, I don't really think a lot of people would buy them. We would take a significant loss in the amount of money that we get, especially for clubs that don't get a lot of money, like GSA, they don't get a lot of money, and they sell food, and if they couldn't sell food, they would have a loss of like hundreds of dollars for a club that's barely funded.
They sell food during the school day to students?
Most clubs sell stuff like during like lunch periods, or they do like pre-orders, like, like you guys said, sports do a lot of pre-orders, and they get lots of money for that. And a lot of the time, you can't give it to kids after school, because first off, we don't have a late bus, and a lot of kids can't drive, so unless I'm driving them home, there's no way to give it to them, or I'm driving to their house.
So I have some other bad news. There's a state regulation that you cannot have any sales during the day when we're operating our program, and all of that funding needs to go to our program. That, that is a state regulation, because they don't want competing sales with the lunches. So we shouldn't be doing that anyway.
But I would say we're one of, what, 180 districts that do it in the, in the state.
I just had to say it. Okay, yeah.
And it's hard for the. A meal replacement, so it's not like we're, we're selling meals.
No, I know.
So just selling any type of food during a school day, any money that you raise is supposed to go back to the district.
No, right, no sales, and this is true of every school, whether you choose to agree to the certification or not, you are not to sell food that kids, like vending machines, for example, are not to be on and operable while her program is running during the day, so during the lunch program.
We really shouldn't be distributing any fundraiser food. We could sell fundraisers, but we shouldn't be distributing the actual food.
There's a lot of things we should probably talk about during our policy meeting that's coming up as we review the wellness policy.
I just don't think that you guys are recognizing there's, there's more to that high school experience. Like, it's the, you know, it's the GSA coming together saying, how can we raise money? This is the best way we know how. Because, you know, we've seen the statistics on the GSA, 85% of those kids aren't at home. So they can participate in GSA activities within the school and try to raise a little money for their clubs. So I don't think that this is horrible, it's been done for a very long time, we're not the only district that does it, we cannot fund our clubs. And it teaches teamwork, it's more than just about money, it teaches teamwork to these clubs to come up with a common goal of fundraising a little bit of dollars and working together to come up with supplies. up with supplies. I mean, you're, I just think it's a lot that we're tending to not look at the full educational experience or the experience in the school day. And I think we're doing that a lot lately. And I think this is a hill we don't need to die on.
Ms. Cushman?
So you've, you've have mentioned a few times in Superintendent Macchio, this wellness policy. So if any of the, regardless of how the vote goes tonight.
Yeah.
Would the Krispy Kremes, is that even something that we could be selling under the wellness policy or the candy grams?
Yeah, that would probably be a no. Yeah. So that's something that I think that we needs to be looked at.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I have not delved into the wellness policy. It hasn't been my number one priority at this exact moment. However, it is something that should be reviewed. And I know as, I know Diane mentioned the triennial evaluation that happens and, you know, she gets rated from the State Department as terms of their regulations and how well she's meeting all of those. So there's a, there's a lot of different pieces here.
The triennial assessment is actually district wide and I had met with Michelle Middleton when we did it, yeah. So it includes physical activity, includes all the, a lot of other things that happen in school, nutrition, education, things like that.
Then perhaps this is something you phase in for next year, to give opportunities to groups to come up with alternative ways to fundraise.
That's certainly something to think about, yeah.
Again, the certification requires board vote. It's, I can tell you, there's a, out of my districts that I've been a part of, the Enfield will be the first one that I've been a part of that has not approved it and that's fine. It's, again, it's a board decision in terms of how the vote goes. I, it is very, I remember back when this was originally brought in, I think I was in Ellington at the time. It took a while for people to figure out other ways of doing things. And I think if the food is the portion, then Diane will have to work with a lot of the different folks regarding what is on, or what is considered approved, I guess would be the best way to put it, per those guidelines about what could or what could not be sold.
Yeah, do you have a, you have a list of things that are okay and aren't okay or at least?
I can get the state list, yeah. You know, that's something you can look at, yeah.
Yeah, because then like we could give them to, you know, it could be posted on the website, on our website and given to coaches and PTOs so that they knew what they could do within the school day if they wanted to.
The other, the other portion of this, I think, as, as an offset Diane, is obviously we weren't going to do it this evening, but I believe you were talking about a potential increase in student lunch and breakfast prices that we're, we were gonna be looking at in probably the next few months. I believe the recommendation that you had made originally was based on, on this being approved. So we could always revisit what those price increases could be so that she can continue to meet her thresholds in order to run in a, really net neutral is the goal.
Mr. Coburn, I saw you had your hand up.
Thank you, Ben. Sure. So just a couple of things, the superintendent already mentioned it. So we do have that school wellness policies. I just want to mention the 6142 dot 101. So probably through the policy committee, we should maybe add that to our agenda to look at, because it does talk about USDA guidelines we have to follow. And then it also does make reference to the Connecticut nutrition standards for food in schools, which I believe is what the certification is. So we definitely want to look at that. I know I was also looking just at the state website regarding this and it's interesting how it talks about the time in the school day. So it defines the school day as a beginning at midnight and then ending 30 minutes after the end of school. So like when we're talking about things in the morning, like if we pass this, those would all be not acceptable. And then even when the bell rings for dismissal, you have to wait 30 minutes. So it is kind of a, a wider restriction. And then also, as you know, we talk about.
Yeah, and that's not even with the healthy food certification, that's.
Yeah.
That's just state regulation, yeah.
State, yeah, off the state side. And then also, of course, with everything, like when we talk about policy, we kinda wanna like foresee the experience and the unintended consequences. And maybe if we do, you know, if we pass this, like, could it affect sales? Like, could, could this reduce sales? Because then kids, hey, if I can't, you know, get these snacks, maybe they're gonna be bringing in more snacks or something, stopping at the convenience store on their way in, like if they're in high school or stuff like that. So just things to keep in mind, you know. And then, of course, too, like just talking about, obviously, our precedent has been, as long as several board members mentioned, we've always been voting no and no. So this is kind of a shift in the other direction. So I just kinda wanted to throw my thoughts out there on that.
Mr. Ryder?
So the state regulation that you referenced, Mr. Coburn, and that you have referenced, Ms. Edwards, isn't that why we didn't opt in? So we weren't tethered to that? Or is this a new regulation that no matter what we do, this will override that? That's my question.
That was always a regulation that the sale of any foods can't compete with the school lunch and breakfast program.
Right.
That's always been, okay. So.
But that was only if we opted into this, correct?
No, that's always, no, that's.
Okay.
Not even looking at this. Competitive sales, the, the state does not want competitive sales with, with the food and lunch, breakfast and lunch. Okay, so when we're looking at it before, the first thing was, do we need the income into my department? Because the money has to go into my department.
Right, right.
So, so the answer was no. And then, so, so from there, we would say, well, there's no sense in going through all the work to do the healthy food certification to get a district contact person if we don't even need that funding.
Right.
So we tried to delay it as long as we could. But I didn't realize the amount of fundraising that was happening with those kinds of foods in competition with the school. Because I, I believe I had talked with the principal, you know, and she was like, no, we're not, we don't have competitive sales. And when she brought the vending machines in, we made sure that they were compliant with our, with our food and beverage sales, you know, too, and that they're only on a certain time. So this is kinda new information for me. But so I can, I totally understand, you know, your concerns.
I don't know if they are competing sales. Like, I don't know if somebody's saying, buy a donut and you don't have to eat today's lasagna. I think it's like, here's a snack that we're doing to raise funds for our team or our club or our, whatever it is. And it's not like they're gonna be delivered at 12 o'clock and I'm gonna eat that instead of buying from you. These were things that were delivered first thing in the morning or towards the end of the day, like seventh period, they'd pass out all the candy grams that were bought like at lunch. Yes, they might've given their dollar at lunch, but the candy was delivered towards the end of the school day.
Yeah.
I think the state considers any food give, sold during the school day as competition to the nutrition program, whether or not it's.
Whether or not we opt in?
Whether, yeah, whether, just as a normal state regulation. But my question is, not to cut you off.
No, no.
Could we, do we have the time to be able to table this, get the lists of the things and maybe get Diane some more information on maybe the things that are going on? Because I think we're like outing ourselves right now, so maybe.
If, if you have two meetings in June, then yes.
Okay.
Because in order for her to submit the certification, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm, you need to have first approval and then you need another board meeting to officially approve the minutes of that meeting. Because in order for her to submit, she needs official board minutes to be uploaded to the state.
Okay, so I have new information, because I was looking at that to see.
And that's why I'm looking at you.
Yep. So we can take the draft. They will accept the draft, but then you do have to upload the approved minutes after.
So then you could, so using that newfound information, and Kathy, now I am gonna look
at you, we would be able to vote at the next meeting. Your draft minutes would be able to be created after that meeting.
Right.
So you'd be able to do this at the next meeting.
Okay.
The first meeting in June.
Okay. So I'm gonna put a motion out there to table this, to get the additional information about, you know.
Approved list.
The approved list of what we can, plus get Diane some more information about, you know, what fundraisers are doing that may or may not be already in violation of state regulation and come back and have a better discussion.
I'll second your motion to table.
Okay. So then we need a show of hands?
We really should do a roll call.
Roll call vote?
Can I do a quick discussion? I just have one question that I'd like her to consider before we.
Sure.
Do I have the discussion?
Yeah.
Perfect.
No, you can't.
No, we can't.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, then I would just say that if you have specific questions, email them to Mr. Macchio and he will get with Ms. Edwards and we will have more information.
Okay.
Okay. So I need a roll call vote on tabling.
Yes. Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Coburn?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
No.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yep, yes.
Sherwin Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank Diane.
Okay, so if you can all just forward me any other questions that you want specifically addressed, then I'll meet with Diane. We'll put those together. And I have a couple of different Friday updates that I can send them back to you, Ed.
So I just want to be clear, we have not been participating in the Connecticut Healthy Food Certification. This would be, that's the change. And then, right. And so then my question is, do our food lunch options change? Because I know some of our, and breakfast options. I wouldn't say that we're always following maybe all of these guidelines, even with some of our own choices. So just wondering.
You don't have to answer right now.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the que.
So if we are, so now if we are going to be complying with the healthy food certification, because we're currently not, will our school and breakfast lunch ops, options change?
No, we are already following all of the guidelines that my, my program requires.
Interesting.
Because we partici, because we participate in the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program, her menus have to comply with those nutritional standards.
And we just, we just got reviewed.
Just interesting choices. Like, I just see some of, especially the breakfast choices where I'm like, wow.
Yep, yep, absolutely. I don't disagree with you on that. And I think we've had that conversation as I sampled many of our lunches in the various schools.
Everything, I was just reviewed two years ago, yes. And they took at all of our labels, everything I purchase, they, they review everything and it's all in compliance.
Diane, I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, thanks.
My questions are directed towards you because you're representing this change, but it's just, I also represent like all the PTO moms and dads in town and a couple other people reached out to me and I was, like, my focus is like K5 and we, in the middle school. And then we got to hear from the, the high schoolers. It's just, I just think it's a bigger deal. Like, when this first came up in leadership a few weeks ago, I was, my jaw dropped. I was like, what, what? Like, I just baffled. So thank you for, I'm not, I'm not upset at you whatsoever. I'm just, I just want clarity because we, I don't know if what we raise for all these different groups equals 40 grand, but it's like, either you get it or we get it from the students and families and it goes to all these different clubs. Like, I, I just wanna see all the options, that's all.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah. This is enlightening, so that's good. I'm glad we got this information to look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to number seven, superintendent's report.
Start with the student reps.
Okay, so I have a few things, a lot of things regarding senior-like activities since we're going towards the end of the year. So our senior picnic is in Hive Meadows from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And our class night is that following, like that night when you come back, at Twin Hills Country Club from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, this Friday, May 10th, I mean, May 30th. Everyone's permission slips should be in, so that's gonna be then. Seniors can purchase their yearbooks online this week through Friday afternoon by clicking a link that's in their Outlook or buying it at class night for about $80. But just so we're aware, all the yearbooks are pretty limited. I will say that. And then our nine, non seniors will be able to grab their yearbooks Monday, June 2nd during 1A. And then we'll also have a map ball tournament coming up June 5th. Well, there will be an information meeting this Thursday after school for teams already signed up to attend.
So again, not a whole lot going on now that we're cooling down the school year. And I know some of this is already on the agenda to talk about, but there will be the awards, the World Language Awards Night this Thursday at 6:00 PM. And next Wednesday is the awards night for the high school at 6:30 and recipients should arrive at 6:00. Recipients have already been notified. Final exams for seniors start Friday, June 6th, and final exams for everyone else start Monday, June 9th. So good luck to everyone getting ready for those. And tomorrow, we have a Get Outside and Play Day tomorrow where different classes or teachers sign up their classes to go outside for almost like a little field day, just to motivate students to finish out the school year strong and just build up the school community. That's what I have for tonight.
Thank you.
All right, so they've already mentioned the High School World Languages Award Ceremony. They've already mentioned the High School Awards and Scholarship Night. So great job, ladies. Adult Education Graduation, I know, I believe was mentioned earlier, but it's gonna be held on June 5th. It's in the Enfield Annex. And we did include in your pack at the invitation and, as well as a quorum agenda. And then we have the Summer Board of Ed Meetings. Just a reminder for those that are going to want to be watching and for the board members yourselves, that those will start June, July and August at 5:00 PM. And then we'll go back to 7:00 when we come back to school in September. And lastly, for the Enfield Public School Update, very short, you have, go for it, sir. And we actually utilized it tonight. We have, obviously with Kathy, do you have a countdown for your retirement? In her head, she does. But as Kathy's retiring, we're losing a lot of knowledge. So she, she has found a couple of what I'll call cheat sheets in terms of Robert's rules, in terms of whether it's a roll call, whether it's a hands up call, all that fun stuff. So those are being distributed for you. And I will say that we did have, I met with students at JFK as well as students at the high school last week. And those conversations were so long and so robust that we need to be scheduling more. We literally couldn't get through all of our agenda because the kids wanted to share so much, which was awesome. It was great to hear. And I thought the kids did a great job. They were wonderful. And I will end there because I'm sure we're gonna have a whole lot more conversation, because the majority of my time and energy has been concentrating on the budget. So I know that's a upcoming agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Macchio. Okay, we are on number eight, audiences. Maureen Griffin.
Hello, Maureen Griffin, Abbey Road. I didn't know what I was gonna talk about, but they gave me stuff. Vision of a graduate, the, the climb idea and what it means, it looks good, it sounds good. I would like to suggest that it also be considered not just the graduate, but more the vision of the schools, including the administration and staff. Because in order for it to really impact where you talk about culture and community, it has to be reciprocal with the kids and the staff and especially the admin who are supposed to be setting the stage and setting the tenor of the schools. And I was really glad to hear that Mr. White has been a part of the development of this and will continue to be, because none of it's gonna work without a large input and work of the social supports, social workers. You want a vision of the graduate, you have to have a mentally healthy, emotionally healthy school. We need those supports back. I know we have some, they haven't completely got it, but they were severely cut back. And I hope that's priority moving forward to marry into this program, because otherwise it's not gonna work. And like with what Mr. Gauss said, especially when you talk about the kids who get, get off track, aren't, aren't tracking, you know, by second grade, they're doing this, by fifth grade. That's where you really need the supports, like what they used to have, the PBIS. It's all exercising futility without that. Listening sessions. My daughter, one of my, one of my children was a part of them. And she said that they were pinging off of each other, the kids, it was really great. But there's so much more that they have to say. So I'm really happy to hear that there's going to be multiple meetings. And I just hope that there are concrete actions that develop, not three years down the road, but that the kids can see that they were heard, that they have impact. I know you can't change everything in a day, but you can take some of what they said and implement to help the climate. Thanks, that's all.
Thanks, Maureen.
We have one other. Lucian.
Okay, Lucian, come on up.
Sorry, I'm trying to give you a sec.
It's okay, it's okay.
Enfield Veterans Council. I just want to say thank you to the Enfield School System for participating in our parade this past weekend. The support we get from the school is phenomenal. The Enfield High Marching Band always participates in our parades, and as we were coming up Enfield Street, I had the pleasure of walking with the Connecticut VA Commissioner, and all the way up Enfield Street, he's going, is that the high school band behind us? And I kept going, yeah, it is. And he says, they are really good. And then when we got to the green, and they did the service songs, he was behind me on the, at the podium, going, they are really good. So, we appreciate the band participating in our parade, also the Honors Chorus for doing the National Anthem. And I saw we had the Best Buddies Club from JFK, and the Best Buddies Club is near and dear to me, I did Unified Sports with Special Olympics, so to see them out there as a group, and I noticed they had a banner this time, so I was impressed with that, that they brought a banner. So I'm here to ask for more participation from the school system. You know, like I've said before, love to get Buzz Robotics involved, the school teams. Our Veterans Day Parade is coming up November 9. I know it's next school year, but guess what, we're going to have a football team, and a soccer team, and a wrestling team, and I would love to have them come out and participate and march with their uniforms on, but they're, you know, if nothing else, they're sports jackets, and if we get a bunch of athletes like Ethan, I was here earlier, I was looking at the back of his jacket, and he's, you know, football, baseball, and wrestling, you'd have to pick which team to march with. So, it gives them a chance to be exposed to the large veterans community that we have in town here. It also gives the veterans and the rest of Enfield the opportunity to have them showcase what they do, what they're doing in this town, get some exposure, other than just being, you know, at the football game on a weekend, or something like that there, and that everybody doesn't attend. The goal is to have participation from both sides. So, my goal is to get as many of the groups, clubs, the sports teams involved in the two parades that we do annually, Veterans Day and Memorial Day. And, you know, like I said, get the exposure for those students, they deserve it, they do a great job, so, that's my goal, is to get them more involved, and the community more involved with them, to know what they're doing, and what the school system is doing for the children in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lucian. All right. Well, okay. I'm not sure who is in charge of Head Start. Is it the school board? Does it come to, see, Enfield is not known for having a Plan B. While we're on vacation this summer, it's very likely that Head Start could be done. We could have no food to feed these kids. I had the opportunity to ask John Kissel this weekend, what's the plan, Plan B? For what? What's Head Start? I said, give me a break, John, you know what Head Start is. No, I don't know anything about it. I asked John Sansonello, do you have a Plan B? Oh, don't worry, don't worry, the state has a rainy day fund, it'll take care of the food, those kids will get fed, don't worry. Then I asked Marie Prizner, or Pizner, or whatever it is, and she had a very vague answer about, they had a meeting with four people, but nothing was really discussed. So, there could come a day, and the next day, there's no food for these kids. And I believe the town of Enfield owes them, and owes the whole community, a Plan B. And with two meetings left, you don't have much time to come up with a Plan B, but there has to be a way to feed these children, because they're hungry, and that's all the food they get all day. So I just hope you sincerely think about how these kids are going to get fed, if in fact it does happen, which God only knows what will happen, but it could happen, and it's very, very important that we feed our kids. That's it. Thank you, Judy. Oh, one more thing. Mr. Lefebvre, he, I wrote something on Facebook, and what I said was, unfortunately, the people that go to the, to see the speakers and the veterans are only most likely the band parents and the other parents that have to pick up their kids. It's not the community. The community is, they should be there, and there should be some way to inform them how important it is to be there, to listen to the veterans, because that's what it's all about, it's not just about the parade. It's about going and listening, and participating. So, that's it. Thank you. Okay. Board Member Comments, Mr. Coburn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it kind of works out, the last two speakers tie into the beginning of my comments. So I wanted to begin with a quote, "For the love of country, they accepted death." This quote is by James A. Garfield, 20th President of the United States, and I bring this up, because this past weekend, we recognized Memorial Day, and while the holiday and the long weekend typically mark the unofficial beginning of summer, let us not forget the reason for the holiday, the solemn remembrance dedicated to our service members that have lost their lives in service to our country. Beyond that, the end of the school year continues to rapidly approach us, graduation will soon be here, and there is plenty of positive news and events happening every week. Buzz Robotics recently won the CASIAC CT State Championship, Sunday before this previous one, and of course, earlier tonight, we heard some accomplishments of one of our student athletes. Beyond the positive stuff, we're continuing to monitor and address opportunities, including everything from TikTok challenges and trends to behavior incidents at our secondary schools. So in the spirit of time, I want to keep my comments brief, and save more substantive remarks for the business items that are coming up later on our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coburn. Mrs. Pickett?
I also had some parade comments. I got to participate with my daughter, and I wanted to thank the Veterans Council for the work that you all do in our community. I've said it here before, my dad does not live in Enfield, but he loves Enfield, because he feels that we do a great job honoring our veterans, I know that's a lot of hard work that you and others do, so thank you for that. I also wanted to thank the students who participated. Yes, there were like official EPS groups, but there was lots of other student ways to participate, so I marched with softball, and I saw other, there were a few other teams. I also think that it was interesting, a girl I marched with had three groups that she had the possibility of marching with, so she had to pick who she was marching with. So I do think there's some of that going on, and I agree, seeing students and families there and attending the ceremony is important. Maureen, I love your idea of the portrait of a learner, and this reciprocal staff and student definitions, I think that could be actually a really cool staff activity, to have them define those words for adults, and what does that look like as us as instructors or healthy adults in our school buildings? I think that would be a really cool idea. Also excited to hear about the listening sessions with our students that Steve provided in our update. I agree with you, actions matter most, so hoping to see what those follow-up steps are after those listening sessions, and how students will be informed of that, because I think we ask for a lot of feedback, and then showing folks what we do with the feedback that we get is really important. I also want to share Head Start is important, I've shared some comments about that, I do have some concerns. I don't know if we exactly have a Plan B, because the reality is, the funding for Head Start would be a dramatic loss, and so I think that's just a reality. So I heard, well first, I'm going to say thank you to the student reps. Last week, I made a really last-minute request to have the student reps participate in a mental health awareness campaign for Mental Health Awareness Month, where we recorded a small, short clip on what mental health means to us. For the Wiseman Children's Foundation, they do a lot of great work for mental health and access and training professionals, and so I want to thank both the student reps for their thoughtful contributions, and for helping spread that important message. I also heard that tonight is the last night for student reps at meetings, which like makes me feel sad, because I wasn't completely prepared for that. No, maybe not. Izzy said she's tapping out tonight, so maybe I'll just say my goodbye to Izzy then. Well, then if it's not, you'll get another official goodbye.
Liv, I think you're still in, but I think this is for Izzy.
Well, I'll say for one for Iz, Olivia, I can't wait to welcome you back next year, and your wisdom will be greatly appreciated. Izzy, I wish you nothing but the best. Both of you have been some of my favorite moments this year on this board, you have both added such fresh perspective, and shared needed, real, honest feedback in brave ways during moments that were challenging, and I just want to thank you both for what you've done as far as activating student voice, but also getting your peers involved, like having, getting feedback from them, bringing their issues here, you've just done a phenomenal job, so I thank you both. I do have some questions about facilities, so Steve, I know you mentioned in our weekly update, some concerns around the impact of the additional custodial cuts, so from my understanding, four custodians were cut on the town side of the budget. I will share any elected official who has toured our buildings, and thinks of cutting our frontline staff is actually going to help, I'm really concerned. Custodians are our frontline staff, they do a lot more than just empty trash bins, they build relationships with students and staff, and they take care of lots of things that nobody else wants to take care of. I'm deeply concerned about what the impact will have on our buildings, and I'm hoping that we are having, I know there's some conversations, I'd like some updates on kind of what our plans are for supporting our facilities. As a parent, I think I've made too many emails about like regular lawn cutting at my kid's school. Pulling ticks off of kids because they're at school is not something we should be doing, and not because grass is almost to our knees, so, just thinking about the resources that we need and the facilities that we offer. I want to give a shout out to PLA. So, two weekends ago, my family participated in two amazing events, the townwide tag sale and the wellness event that was held on that Sunday. You truly show that we are better together, and that families do have amazing talent, so thank, thanks both of those groups. I think we're going to have a budget update officially later, perfect, I'll save that, and I'm going to save my rest of my comments for later as well. Thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Ryder?
Okay, so since we've last met, a couple of us had the pleasure of going to the eighth grade award ceremony at JFK. I wanted to thank Principal Brown, who was this year, for that. It was a great honor to be able to be there and present some of the awards, and also to see our eighth graders heading off, our Patriots becoming Eagles. I also wanted to congratulate Parent Leadership Academy on their graduation, that was the next day, that was on Thursday, May 15. Again, thank you to Lousie Lawler and Karen Campbell, who were the coordinators of this year's program, and it was a great success, it was a great evening. As Amanda mentioned, the townwide tag sale was Saturday, thank you for you who participated, and then Sunday, the PLA group that had just graduated days earlier, literally, three days earlier, put on a big vendor fair out here on the green with over 40 vendors and participants, and they had a lot of really good foot traffic for the first, I'd say from noon to 2:00, it was a really good foot traffic. I spoke with some of the vendors that were there, they were happy with their sales, they were happy with the marketing behind it, so I wanted to thank them from that perspective. I wanted to thank the Summers Board of Education, I was invited to speak there tonight to do a small presentation regarding the Kindness Awards that I also give out here in Enfield, but unfortunately, they also meet the second and fourth Tuesdays, or at least the fourth Tuesday of the month, because it was the same bat time, same bat channel as this evening, so thank you for the invite, and I hope you did well, Karen, speaking there. Tomorrow's my father's birthday, quick shout out to Dad, number 83. Begin my Field Day tour tomorrow, I'll be DJing the Field Day at Eli Whitney on Wednesday, Henry Barnard on Thursday if it doesn't rain, if not, I'll see you guys on Monday. We'll also be doing our North Central Act of Kindness Awards at JFK this week, our final visit of the year, and we'll be at Enfield High School next week, so maybe I'll see you at school. And then, of course, this Friday, I'll be DJing Prudence Crandall's Field Day. Monday, we'll do Barnard if it rains on Thursday. We've got Enfield Street next Friday, and potentially Parkman the following Monday. Hopefully, I'll be able to go to First Reader's, which I'm sure you'll tell us more about.
Yes, I was actually, just right in those times now.
Yep, so that's actually what we have going on, I'll be on a Field Day tour for the next seven out of 10 days, and we look forward to seeing you at 5:00 on June 10. That's it for this week.
Okay. Anybody else want to go next? Dr. Callen?
I just wanted to touch on a subject I don't think we've really talked about before, but I think it's really kind of important. I'll just start with a quote, "On the broad and firm foundation of health alone, can the loftiest and most enduring structures of the intellect be reared?" And that's a quote from Horace Mann, who is credited as being the father of American public education back in 1891. Like Mann, I remain convinced that health and education are inextricably bound together. Health lends itself to a good education, and education lends itself to good health. Yet, since we lost the highly esteemed Dr. Ross Porter to the state of Florida where he retired, we still don't have a school district physician. Am I correct about that? I think. The American Medical Association not only recommends that school health care be provided by, quote, "a professionally-prepared school nurse," end quote, but also that, quote, "health services must be supervised by a physician, preferably one who is experienced in the care of children and adolescents," end quote. And there's also a quote from the American Academy of Pediatrics. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends a school nurse for every school, and a school physician for every school district. A school physician can work with the Enfield School District to address at least the four following issues. First, the possible outbreak of vaccine-preventable diseases. Measles obviously comes to mind, but with the rise of vaccine skepticism, other preventable diseases such as meningitis, pneumonia, whooping cough, and even polio are also distinct possibilities, and we need to be sure that we have an area physician who can serve as a conduit between the school district and the medical community to ensure rapid communication and action. Lives could literally hang in the balance. Secondly, pediatricians must be made aware of the toll that the mental health crisis is taking on our schools, and one of their own colleagues is in the best position to convince area pediatricians that they have a critical role to play in getting this crisis under control. Third, once a school-based health center is established somewhere in Enfield, its activities should be closely coordinated with those of area pediatric practices, as recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics. This would be one of the responsibilities of the school district physician. And finally, school restorative justice initiatives offer an opportunity for collaboration between the school district and the medical community through the intercession of the district physician. It's easy to talk about why having a school district physician is such a great idea, but actually making it happen is another matter entirely. There are probably a number of reasons why we haven't been able to recruit a physician, but the most important is that we have not succeeded in making a strong and lasting connection with the medical community. We can't simply walk into the office of a physician we've never met before, and just ask them to become the district physician. It's first necessary to establish a relationship, which takes time. We got off to a good start last year with the Kite-sponsored Physician Dinner, but a one-and-done initiative isn't going to cut it. My advice is that someone from the Superintendent's Office meet regularly with the pediatricians. It doesn't have to be anything fancy, maybe just getting together over coffee and donuts, even if it's just two or three times a year. Kite might be willing to facilitate the organization of these meetings. My strong suspicion is that a physician or a nurse practitioner could be recruited in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Callen. Mr. Blake, I saw you had your hand up.
Izzy and Olivia, I can't say anything better than Amanda said, but I appreciated your participation, again bravery is a very important word, and your honesty in giving us an insight of a student's view inside Enfield High School, and in the district, whether it was about the impacts of the budget cuts, clubs, just thank you. it was about the impacts of the budget cuts, clubs, just thank you so much. And Izzy, if I don't see you again, I will see you at graduation. If I don't see you in here, right? So that's where we'll see you. So it's not goodbye yet. I do want to take a moment to mention that there was a longtime board member named Joyce Hall. She was amazing. She made lasting impacts in this district. And recently, Mr. Ryder received the Joyce Hall Enfield Democrat of the Year Award regarding his contributions to education as a board member, and it's highly deserved. And I wanted to congratulate him because I couldn't be there that evening. And it's quite a legacy to leave that with Joyce, because we love Joyce, and you and Joyce had this little special relationship that I loved to hear about. So congratulations to you. I have a few questions. I have an outstanding request through the chair to the superintendent. I had asked about the resignation trend at Enfield High over three different school years. And in the last year in particular, there were 27 resignations. And I was going to get more specifics on, you were going to talk to Dr. Barrios, and I was going to get more specifics as to the reasons of those resignations. So I'm still waiting on that information. I do have a question. So this week, the Friday update was so discouraging. I mean, we're losing quality staff left and right. All of our staff is quality, but seeing those two names on the staff resignations, I need to ask, what is central office doing for staff engagement? Is there any type of communication going out to staff saying, "We're in this together. I believe in us. We can rebuild." It can't keep coming from the administrators. Is there an initiative from central office? Because I just keep thinking like, okay, this one left, and all right, I know that there's not going to be another big hit. And then it's two big hits, and then it's another big hit. What are we doing? Is there communication from central office? It has to come from central office. It can't just keep coming from the admin. I mean, we're losing staff with not only the drive, but the experience and the knowledge of how Enfield works. Through the chair to the superintendent, is there communication, like directly from you to the staff?
There's some occasions where I communicate directly to the staff. And for some of those folks that you saw in last Friday's update, I have direct meetings set up so we can get further details regarding the specifics why they're leaving.
I think that's good, but these meetings should have been continued. We can't blame it all on budget cuts.
Variety of reasons that we hear about, but unless they're willing to sit down and talk to me about it, it's speculation. So like I said, one of those for sure, I do have a meeting set up with.
We have to be willing, as a district, to want people to sit down with us. Because we need, we can say it, but we can't, I don't know that we're showing it. And like, I'm sitting here, and I'm looking at the vision of the graduate, and I felt like Maureen was reading my mind, because I'm like, this is only going to be successful if our staff feel valued and part of the process. Because if they're not feeling valued, that's only good on paper. They need to feel that they're part of this process, that they're valued. We've been through probably one of the roughest school years we've been through with budget cuts and behaviors because of the lack of staff. But they, the morale in the district, honestly, is low. And there's so much more we could be doing for them. And the resignations show. Like, I'm going to go back through all the Fridays, and the amount of people that have left have just been devastating. And I think that's something, as a district, we need to be working on, because I'm afraid we're just going to keep seeing more and more and more. And we can have all these meetings, and we can have AdCo and stuff like that, but there's more going on that we need to get a pulse on. We have listening students with, listening sessions with the students. I think we need to have listening sessions with the teachers, because they, like Izzy and Liv and the students and Maureen's daughter, they give the pulse of what's happening in the buildings. And I think there's a lot of people that are overwhelmed. But I don't think anything's unfixable. So that's all I have for tonight.
Ms. Akri?
First, I'd like to say that I am so glad that Liv and Izzy, that you were part of our board meetings. Your presence was very much appreciated. Congratulations, Izzy, on your graduation coming up. And I know you'll do well in Temple, at Temple University. Kudos to the music department at Enfield High School. I got a chance to attend the spring choir and orchestra concert on May 15. Of course, our students did an amazing job from using their beautiful voices, singing Mozart's La Crimosa to singing "And Wherever You Go," which was a lovely song dedicated to the graduating seniors. I was also impressed by the talents and skills of our instrumental musicians performing in the chamber orchestra, in the regular orchestra. First, the chamber orchestra had a stirring rendition of Irvin Berlin's "God Bless America" to the full orchestra performance of Jupiter by Gustav Holtz. I'd like to congratulate Amanda Tillman, Mark Rapucci, and Elizabeth Tomcik for a job very well done. And also, congrats to our dedicated and talented musicians of the Enfield High School. Thank you.
Mr. Dousey, you want to go?
Sure. For many years, I marched in the Enfield parades along with Cub Scouts and the Enfield High School marching band. I currently drive little cars in all of the parades when, not this year, because I've had some issues. But I can tell you, everyone that I have marched with and all of those kids were very proud to do it, and they knew why they were doing it. And there is, like what I'm saying right now, is thank you to everyone that has served, given their lives, or continues to serve. They're all very proud to do it. Congratulations on your graduation. Hope to see you back again. And I'm surprised Mr. Cobra missed out on this quote. But one of my favorite quotes is from Rear Admiral Grace Hopper, and it is one of the most dangerous phrases in the English language, is "We've always done it that way." And I just want to keep that in mind as we try to move forward and do better every year. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Kushner, you want to go?
Okay, so I feel like I lost the memo on this one, that tonight was Izzy and Olivia's last night. Now I feel...
Maybe I made up a rumor.
I mean, Izzy brought us, Izzy brought us a treat, some crumble cookies, which I've only seen on a viral video before. So like, this, now I'm about to eat it. This is pretty cool. But I would have brought you guys flowers and treats and stuff if I knew. Mr. Macchio, you could put that in the Friday update.
I would have put it in the Friday update if Mr. Macchio had known.
But I wanted to thank you ladies. In my opinion, you guys exceeded my expectations. I thought that your contributions were valuable, and it gave an insight into student population that people might not see on a normal basis. So thank you for all your hard work. And I'll see you at graduation night, but congratulations. And Olivia, I'm sure, I just saw your picture today hanging up in the hallway at Prudence Crandall again for KidGovern. So hopefully we'll see you next year.
Was I kidding here?
Yeah, yeah. So Amanda, you had questions about joint facilities. We had, I probably should go with the joint facility update, but since you asked it, you can comment. So there's a new deputy director of operations, and he's like a total facilities guy. His name is Eric Wykander, and he's had a whole laundry list of experiences in schools. And so he, right now, he's brand new, like a week maybe. So he's currently working on facility assessments, and he's working on a custodial operation plan, and he has to take it to HR for sign-off. So like, that's what's going on with this. But I feel like we're probably in a good place with starting to get good control of what's going on with custodians and facilities. So hopefully, it just keeps getting better. But yes, I do have worries about custodial numbers, especially with the reports that we had from some of our student reps.
Thank you.
I got to go to the Buzz Robotics Open House at the Annex, and that was amazing. The kids did a great job. They took any visitor that came in. They took them around to all their different rooms that they have down there. They showed us how they build them, where they CNC machine stuff. They showed us where they do CAD and like 3D printing for parts. They showed us where they do electrical and programming. And they have a playing field down there in where the old cafeteria is. And they invite other high schools who don't have an area to do that to come in, and they can practice there, too. So I thought that was really neat. And so shout out to them. And they wanted me to say that if anybody's interested in Buzz, they really, really, really would love to have some kids who are interested in programming, because they only have one programmer, and they need more. So that was like their big ask. First Readers, we are having our next ceremony next Monday on June 2nd, I believe is Monday. We have to have two split ceremonies, because we have 230 kids that were certified this time around, which is amazing. So if you got a letter from First Readers with the KidOS certificate that says that they can read now, please read the invitation letter, because Hazardville and Enfield Street, I think, are going to come at one time. I can't remember how we split it, but two schools are going to come at one time at 5:00, and then the others come at 6:30. So there's going to be crossing between, and it could get crazy. So please don't come any earlier than we told you to check in, because there's two groups that we have to take care of this time. But we do have our local celebrities that night will be the lovely officers from the EPD. I went to the Hazardville Memorial Pre-Ref sit-down that they had with the teachers and staff, and that was good to listen to. I know John Diggs is compiling a list of everything that's in the ASK, and they've said that it's the same thing. So it was good to actually hear it from their mouths, what they wanted, and what they think that the benefits are going to be and all that. So that was really good to listen to. I really wanted to go to this week's one at the Eagle Academy, but I have to work, so I'm going to miss that one. But I can't wait to hear the conglomeration of them all, when we get the update of what all of the teachers had to say and staff. And then, to go along with that, in regards to what you had said, Tina, about, you know, staff engagement and stuff, I mean, Mr. Macchio goes to the schools, right? He's been here since September. He's been going around to the schools. He sits down with all of them and listens to the pre- ref stuff. He has meetings with the ETA regularly. He's working on the district improvement plan. He goes to like every meeting that he can. He sits with the students and tries to get their feedback and stuff. So he's doing a lot. And so I guess it would be good to know, like, what else do you think would be a good thing for him to do?
I just said communication, direct communication from the staff, from Mr. Macchio to the staff directly. I don't care if it's an email quarterly. The other thing is, have listening sessions with the teachers. I gave two solutions. I'm not getting my information because I'm just dreaming it up, but we're seeing people leave regularly, which means there's issues. And there's issues, not from the bottom up. There's things that need to be addressed, and it's more than just budget issues. And I've asked several times in leadership about different things. And every week, we are just seeing heavy hitters leaving our district. So maybe all those things aren't working, and there needs to be a refocus. And those were my two suggestions.
Okay. So then I guess we could ask Mr. Macchio if he has time to maybe set up a plan for next year to have open listening sessions with teachers, if he has the availability to be able to do that. Because I know he's been working on everything else, so.
Right, but we need the morale of the staff to be up to make everything else work.
Yep, I agree. Okay. So, moving on to 10, unfinished business. We are going to leave that on the table, because we're not ready to repeal that policy yet. Moving on to 11, we already did A. B is policy revisions first reading.
Do I need to table 10A again, though?
No. She said, because it's on the table, you don't have to do anything until you take it off.
Policy 5131.911, the Connecticut School Climate Policy. This proposed policy maintains the same number, but replaces, I thought it was, thank you, but replaces the content of the current policy, 5131.911, bullying, teen dating, violence prevention and intervention. The new language, new language is introduced, and definitions are updated that provide continuity between the three policies that we'll be voting on tonight. According to a statement by CAEB in February of this year, "This updated policy and its accompanying regulations are based entirely on legislation. As a result, boards are required to adopt this policy as written." This statement left us with no opportunity to make any changes to the content or language of the policy. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 5131.911, Connecticut School Climate Policy.
Motion made by Ms. Kushner, I need a second.
Second.
By Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Mr. Cobra?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we've had some hearty discussions in this policy, in our policy subcommittee. So I made some comments then. I'll probably repeat just the essence of kind of my interpretation of this policy. So this is an example of kind of a, what I see is just a continued pattern that I mentioned, of the state kind of infringing on the ability of local boards to manage affairs. Originally looking back, so school climate and that verbiage was actually in Connecticut Public Act 19-166. And that legislation was subsequently updated by Public Act 23167, which is a current reference for this policy. And that's what requires us, or requires Board of Educations to approve this policy prior to July 1st of this year. The intent of, you know, the policy is written, obviously appears noble. The opening sentence, "All schools must support and promote teaching and learning environments where all students thrive academically and socially, have a strong and meaningful voice, and are prepared for lifelong success." I think we can all agree, there's no argument there. Nonetheless, looking into the meat and potatoes per se of this policy, it definitely adds layers of bureaucracy. It creates a role of a district administrator, climate coordinator. A school administrator needs to be a climate specialist. We need to create school climate committees that are appointed. These committees, therefore, would need to hold meetings. We would need to conduct a school climate survey. These are all items and roles that take away staff time and effort away from other tasks. Of course, we're not necessarily hiring these people. These will be added responsibilities to current staff, district personnel, and so forth. So this will be eating into their non-instructional time, i.e. their prep time. This policy also requires training. This policy also directs schools to provide sufficient funding to satisfy the requirements of this policy. However, there's no money tethered with this. So this brings back the theme of unfunded mandates. And going into this policy, one of the standard bullets, number five, ends with the phrase, "to promote basically a dedication to cultural responsiveness, diversity, equity, and inclusion." So on this note, the policy committee had the district obtain an informal legal opinion, just to determine whether that language was in conflict with recent executive orders that we saw that seek to remove some of the DEI language that runs kind of antithetical to some of the policies. So while the opinion stated that it does not violate that, and that it complies with Connecticut state law, it's something to kind of keep in mind, that the way the pendulum swings and kind of some of the verbiage and words have meaning and stuff like that. So, you know, as written, and as our policy chair mentioned, this is a policy where we technically don't have any legwork or anything to stand on to amend the language. So as is, I am not in favor of this policy. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Pegg?
So thank you, Phil, for your comments. One is, I wonder, what is a budgetary impact of getting legal opinion on policies? To the chair, through the superintendent?
It's an hourly rate.
It's an hourly rate. So Shipman and Goodwin, depending on who you have your legal opinion come from, can range anywhere from $300 plus an hour to, if it's one of the big players, it's $450 per hour. We typically have one of the, not the top top, more of the mid threes to above.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I guess my frustration is especially when it's been clear, our state leadership has made it clear, the expectations around public education and the erroneous executive orders with non-defined terms and actually encouraging discrimination. I think sending policies to be reviewed that follow state law and are actually mandated by state law is just costly and not a good use of our time or funds. The other thing that I just share, Phil, is this legislation, A is legislation, so this goes to our state reps as far as how we pass bills and what does get legislated and what doesn't get legislated. I do agree, there's some nuances in the legislation. However, this is foundational work that schools are doing anyway. So we might give names and roles, but the reality is this, the legislation and this policy is about good tier one. How are we building a school community that everybody feels welcomed, included, and affirmed for who they are and have the ability to access their learning? And then what is our behavioral response structures? Those are the two essence pieces of the policy. And that's work that our administrators are doing regardless. And so I think giving, defining roles and responsibilities can actually be helpful, especially since this is work that's already happening. I will share, this is work that I support at the state level, so I will be abstaining from the vote. However, I completely support school climate efforts and the work that the school is doing around this.
Anybody else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Coover?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Obscene.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, Ms. Cushman, 5135.
Policy 5135, Restorative Practices Response. Like the policy on school climate, this new policy and its accompanying regulations based entirely on legislation are required by state, by Connecticut state law to be adopted as written. I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 5135, Restorative Practices.
Motion made by Ms. Cushman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ryder. Any discussion? Mr. Coover?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I have some of my comments kind of mixed in with the next policy, 5131, so I'll try to separate as appropriate. So the proposed 5135 is a shorter policy that includes a direction for administrative regulations to handle enforcement and implementation. Based off previous discussion, I know there's obviously different temperature for how soon we would like to see those. So that's kind of one of my concerns is not having those readily available to append to this policy. Also regarding definitions in this policy, and again, some of this will tether with, I guess I'll save some of the comments as we talk about 5131. But there's now the generic term of challenging behavior is being defined as a catch-all term. And then the policy itself makes, I think in like two different parts, it talks about research-based intervention, which would make sense that we should have that research prior to passing the policy, not kind of evaluating it after the fact. So even the language of the policy says, you know, it's kind of the policy to create those research-based interventions rather than having them done, putting the data before the policy, I guess. So, you know, on that note, I'll save the other comments as we talk about the other policy because it's a little more relating to the discipline rather than the restorative practices. But as our policy committee chair, they obviously do go hand in hand. As a restorative practices is kind of on the tail end of discipline. So I will save my other comments as we talk about the other policy. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Pickett?
I guess my question would be in this policy, school security and resource officers are mentioned. I'm just wondering that you're leaning in support that we will be doing in collaboration with EPD around restorative practices. I know we've seen in our update, training that the admin are doing, but thinking about how this is rolled out and supported to staff and our partners, especially our police department and security staff. Also wondering if our MO, you might want to be reviewed and think critically about what that response looks like.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please, Kathy.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Coover?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Obscene.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, 5131.
5131, the Student Discipline Policy will replace our current Conduct and Discipline Policy, updating the language and definitions to be more consistent with the policies on school climate and restorative practices. This model policy from Shipman addresses a broader range of behaviors, making it possible for the board to repeal five policies if it passes the second reading next month. I would like to make a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 5131, Student Discipline.
Motion. Motion made by Ms. Cushman, second by Ms. Pickett. Any, Mr. Coover?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So building on as our policy committee chair mentioned, this is kind of a lengthy new policy. It incorporates some changes to state law as well as following our current subcommittee work using the policy shift from CAEB to Shipman Services. What I like about this policy is it does include the definitions in the policy. Previously, we had discussions where definitions fall and we've seen them slide to the admin regs at some other levels. On that note, of course, there was, in policy committee, we reviewed the draft administrative regulations that would accompany this. However, I noticed they're not included in the board packet for review. I do also like that this proposed policy is the benefit of combining several other policies and putting them all into one place. So on the note of efficiency, that's a step in the right direction. One of my principal concerns with this new policy is the redefinition of the word bullying, which our current policy basically talks about harm or the perceived threat of harm. This new definition of bullying would include an element of power and imbalance, whether or not real or perceived. So my questions are, these are rhetorical in nature, who and how will determine what constitutes the element of power between students that are supposed to be peered? Could this be a perceived injection of personal prejudices into what is power? Beyond that, we continue to see a shift on the topic of bullying overall and have, as I mentioned, with restorative, have we actually taken time to review data and evidence or are we just kind of following legislation and someone's good idea? Going back in time, bullying was probably dealt with more informally, but the last few decades, we've had a zero tolerance approach and that's been the kind of the steady hand. This new policy moves us to what's called a, or moves us to a tiered response, kind of eradicating everything that we did know about bullying and going under this new definition. And of course, coupling disruptive behaviors as mentioned through restorative practices and then incorporating restorative practices as well. So kind of with all three of these policies, again, where I talk about kind of data and driven decisions, you know, are we doing this before the policy or are we passing the policy first? We really only have one opportunity to do things right for our students. I feel that as a board and as a state, we should take the time to focus on that rather than stamping along policy after policy and not circling back in the effectiveness and the outcome of the existing policies that we have. Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. Pickett?
So Phil, I think some alternate perspective I would share is that behavior is a real concern in our schools. I think what we see through our 911 calls, our discipline data, and what we hear from students themselves has impact. And whether it be physical violence that's happening in our school or verbal harassment or bullying, it's happening and kids are being impacted by it in really profound ways. So I think it's really critical that we have clear policies and procedures for how we are, A, preventing it, so that's the school climate work, how are we creating a community where everybody feels like they're part of it? And then how do we respond when students are still struggling, when they are still challenging behavior? I guess it's the new term. Don't love the catch-all phrase. And thinking about how we support students not only with discipline but also with support since thinking about our multi-tiered system of support work. I think you raised some really good points around behavior is contextually defined and personally experienced and bias is all throughout how people perceive and experience behavior. So my wonder is how will this discipline policy impact our disproportionate representation of students with IEPs and black and brown students who receive suspension and expulsion? We are a, I believe, tier four district for our discipline data for our most vulnerable students. So my hope is that, I think what our data has shown is that our previous policies were not providing great outcomes for our students and a shift in not only disciplining students but also teaching them appropriate behaviors and giving them the supports and structures that they need in order to be able to access their learning. So I wonder how we are supporting staff and addressing implicit bias in our processes. I am concerned a bit that this is a very long and extensive policy and I can't believe there's additional admin regs because it seems like everything is written out in this policy. Perfect. But that, I guess, is a concern or question that I have because we are having some inconsistency in our policies as far as what's going into admin regs and what's going into our policy as written. So a question I have is really ensuring that this is accessible to students and families, that this process is being shared. And to Phil's point, that we are reviewing our data to say, hey, are our policies being followed, are they being followed for everybody as far as what the procedures look like? And are they actually impacting behavior? Are we seeing students change? So I think there's some additional kind of considerations and I see the need around these policies as far as school climate and the ability for students to access learning and feel safe, feeling safe at school.
Anybody else? Mr. Gauss?
I have to say, I agree with Mr. Coover about the lack of a true solid definition on bullying. Whoever's bullied obviously perceives themselves as the lesser of whoever it is. And then that's up to other people to decide for them whether that's true or not. And I just think that a much more clear definition would need to be laid out.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would just share that with the new policy, there is no longer verifying acts of bullying required. So it's really changing the narrative around how we talk about behavior. And I would just also share that the definition is legislatively defined, so.
Dr. Kalman? You had your hand?
Well, I just had a question about Section 3 item for possession or display of obscenity or photographic images or the unauthorized or inappropriate possession and/or display of images, pictures, or photographs, nudity. I'm not sure why, does that include pictures of Venus Delgado or Michael Angelus Davis? It just seems like a very prudish thing to include in prescribed behavior.
These are literally pulled directly from the state. This isn't, this wasn't a policy committee conversation, discussion. This is pulled straight from the state statute about items that can be, potentially be reasons for discipline. It's not a have to, it's reasons that may potentially lead to discipline.
And Dr. Kalman, to your point, I think, because he uses the word inappropriate, so it does go back into that. You know, we use a lot of feels like discretion. And so obviously, this would be like the frontline, teacher, staff, administration, you know, what, what are they interpreting it as? So, you know, hopefully administrative regulation adds some more guidelines and framework to them. But I think to, to leave your point, I think a lot of that is employee discretion for them to interpret versus artwork versus, you know, a magazine that would be considered inappropriate or something like that.
Anybody else? Okay. I would just say, you know, having a student or two that has been bullied, I'm glad that these things are outlined in the policy. And my hope is that through the district improvement plan, we can achieve consistency with how we address bullying and issues like that. So can I have a roll call? Please, Kathy.
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
No.
Mr. Coover?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item C, Discussion and Action Regarding the '25-'26 Fiscal Year Budget. Mr. Macchio.
They got them all. Maureen and Lucian, there's documents right here that we're going to go through in case you don't have them already. And for anyone else who is watching online, we'll place these on the district website after we go through them. So I'm actually going to lead you through, you have three documents. You have one, which is the budget history. The other one is sort of what we had to identify as potential alliance grant funding. And the third is the overall summary. So really, the heart of today's conversation is going to be on the document that is called Budget History. Start on the, the front of that document is the one with the Enfield Public Schools logo. So just to quickly walk everybody through this, we start off with the town appropriation for this current fiscal year. My initial proposal preliminary anticipated spending amount was the 5.86. That started us back at the end of January. We had some adjustments that were made on February 11th when we had one of our Board of Education meetings, and it was then shown to be 4.11%. Between the February 11th and the February 25th, we had the budget workshop meeting, I think it was on February 19th, if I recall it correctly. That's where we presented to the Board of Education four different tiers that we potentially may build back into the budget. Following that conversation, we landed on a 5.57% increase. And that 5.57% increase represented 34.9 additional staff members. It then was turned over, or that was the Board of Education approved budget, was the 5.57%. It was sent downtown. And at a meeting on May 12th, the town council appropriation approved what would be, or basically a reduction of $1.2 million. That overall reduction resulted in the Board of Education budget having an increase of 4.02%. So what you see in that blue shaded area is all of the items that were removed or adjusted within the budget in order for us to meet that 4.02% increase. So for summary purposes, basically all of tier four was taken out, all of tier three was taken out, and a few of the items within tier two. The following week, the town council had an additional appropriation that was approved for the Board of Education. That appropriation was $234,226. When you add it to the prior appropriated amount, your new appropriation would represent a 4.32% increase. So really, when you look at the budget as a whole, it's 4.32% increase as compared to fiscal year '25, so current fiscal year. Now, this is where it gets super confusing. So the entire budget, the entire amount is 4.32% increase. However, a portion of that needs to be identified as potential alliance grant funding. That represents $1,443,501. Or, excuse me, $1,443,501. So that amount on your paper is the very bottom of the back page. And those are summaries of the different object codes that needed to be identified, not reduced in happening, but just reduced in terms of, or excuse me, I'll say it this way, offset through alliance grant funding instead. So they're still happening, but those would be allocated from the alliance grant funding should that legislation pass. If that legislation does not pass, they are appropriated from the money that would be sent directly to the town because you would have the exact same educational cost share grant amount as you had this year. So the overall budget is 4.32%. I would just want to, because the concern is how much additional assistance or support would be, would we actually include? And it is incredibly confusing because you had items that were brought in, you had items that were taken out. Some of those were the same items. Then you had items that were put back in, but yet they had to be allocated as alliance grant funding. back in, but yet they had to be allocated as alliance grant funding. So here are the additional positions that you will be receiving through this appropriation should you approve the budget as presented. You have, the 4.32% represents 29.8 staff members. Now, those are either part-time or full-time, but a part-time staff member, like a .5 FTE. But when you add them all together, there's 29.8 FTE represented staff members. Of the 29.8, 18 of those positions are certified staff members. So what is a certified staff member, for those that are listening? You have nine classroom teachers. Remember, priority number one was reduce class sizes. So nine of those certified staff members are directly aligned to that. You have three social workers because additional support and assistance for the kids. You have three special education teachers for our various programs that we have, whether it be the SOAR program or the ECP program. There's an additional teacher for English as a second language, so a T-SOL teacher. And then also added into that were two additional math interventionists, and those would be for JFK. So that would bring your JFK math interventionist from one to three, one per grade level. The non-certified staff would represent 11.8 FTE. That 11.8 FTE is comprised of behavior technicians. So those are the folks that are working with the SOAR program or the ECP programs or things of that nature. There's four of those that are included in this budget. There are six academic tutors. Each one of them is a 0.5 FTE. So that would be one additional part-time academic tutor for each primary and elementary school. There's a credit recovery is an example that would be in that area. That was a 0.4. You have a part-time nurse. I want to say it was for Crandall School. That's a 0.5. There was a speech and language pathologist assistant. So not a speech-language pathologist, but an assistant to that person. That's a full-time position. There was a security monitor so that we can have full-time security monitors in the Joint Operations Center so that we can have three folks on at all times, and that's a 0.5 FTE. And then lastly, and this is a brand-new item, that in meeting with the ETA, in meeting with the teachers to try to provide some additional support or assistance to them and some additional planning time, especially at the elementary level, through our conversations, I've brought in, I want to say it was eight additional lunch/recess aids. And the purpose of that is so that every school, every elementary school would actually have six lunch or recess aids so that they could transition. A few of them would be out on the recess, would be out with the teachers at recess, which would alleviate all of the teachers needing to be out at recess. That would give each of the elementary teachers at least an additional 30 minutes or so per week, sometimes, you know, depending on how they do their schedule. They could potentially get a couple of additional 30-minute blocks of time for planning or preparation, trying to provide them some additional time. Because really, the number-one thing that I've heard is time, right? We need time. We need time to be able to plan for everything. So those are all of the additional positions that are included in this budget as presented. The second paper that you have with color on it is going to break down that gray area deeper. So if you want to know the specific positions and the specific dollar amounts that we utilize to arrive at the $1.44 million alliance grant funding, this paper will help clarify that for you. And then lastly, the overall summary page, a lot of numbers. The overall summary page is, should the alliance grant funding occur, should the legislation pass, and the state of Connecticut sends us the $1.443 million versus the town, this is the amount that the town would then need to appropriate, or that would then appropriate to the Board of Education. So really, you have a 2.46% that would be appropriated from the town, and then you would have the additional amount is appropriated from the state of Connecticut. Either way it happens, when you add them all together, it's a 4.32% increase as compared to this year. What questions can I answer?
Well, before you, we asked questions. You got to mention that that also helps bring back the team structure for sixth grade JFK because that's an important thing to mention, right? Because that's what Mrs. Brown said.
Yes, the science teacher does that at JFK.
For sixth grade.
Just sixth grade next year.
Let's start. Okay, questions? Mr. Kober?
I'll start off with my questions, and then as we get on, I'll save some comments if we get a motion on the floor or something. So just looking at the adjustments to meet the town council's appropriations and the insurance adjustment, there's a line item, reduce open positions to single 20 and remove others. So are we forecasting then all the new hires as just single without dependents for insurance? Are we just making, are we changing that assumption? Or I guess could you elaborate and unpack that line item?
Yeah, so we are making an assumption that everyone who comes on board would be having a single, is what we're budgeting for. Now, in reality, the folks that we've been hiring, some of them don't take any insurance. So the budgeted amount that we have in there of $13,000, $13,500, if they don't take the insurance, that money can then be utilized for somebody who, rather than taking a single plan, takes a single plus one plan or a family plan. So it's an offset of that. So we budget for every single position. We just, in trying to meet this dollar amount, budgeted with the assumption of a single.
Okay, makes sense. The very bottom column says budget offset portion of the district grant account to be utilized. It's the $99,000. Do you recall what grant or account that's coming out of that we're shifting into the general fund?
That's the district activity account that's related to the open choice grant prior to this fiscal year. You did not need to include an allocate, or you did not need to include a specific line item within your budget. So what happened is they would send you the amount. It would roll over from year to year to year to year to year. I'm spending down some of that rollover.
Got you. Going up to the middle, there's like two budget offsets for the athletic accounts, one's to carry over from FY '25, and the other one's for FY '26, the $253,000s. I don't have the full budget book in front of me, but I thought we had included those already as revenue for the budget. So why are we seeing that?
They were not included originally. So the bud, that is the budget offset that was, so first of all, this current fiscal year, the $53,000 that was anticipated to be received, we have still not transferred in. And with the health of the fiscal year '25 budget, we decided to not roll it into this current fiscal year, but instead utilize it for next fiscal year. And then the projection, which was erroneously not included, was the $53,000, so it's using two years in one.
Makes sense. Two more quick questions. Speaking of erroneous line items, so the supplies, remove duplicate software request. It was only $9,600. When you say duplicate software, do you recall what exactly happened? Was there two departments that requested the same thing, and it wasn't caught till after the fact?
Yes. One, many times, whether it be the Director of Technology and Innovation or the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, you have different software packages. One's in charge of one, some's in charge of the other. They both had them included within, and as we combed through the budget, we found one, and that's why you see it identified.
Makes sense. And the last question I'll give you now, as we give a chance to other people to ask. So I know this year, because the class sizes was an issue, we hired the elementary teaching assistants. I know they weren't in the budget, so can you can just confirm those are not going in next year's budget, and that's part of the reason you're looking at the lunchroom recess aids? Is that kind of the mindset there?
Completely separate, to be honest with you.
But we are.
First of all, they are not included in next year's budget.
Got you.
Second of all, the elementary teaching assistants were paid for out of that district activity account. They were not paid for out of Board of Education funded appropriation. So that rollover amount that I just talked about, we spent it down a little bit this year because of, through the addition of those elementary teaching assistants. Yeah, they, the elementary teaching assistants were meant for in the classroom, extra set of hands. I actually met with a teacher over in Crandall, fourth-grade teacher last week. She praised the fact that she had that additional set of hands to help the 28 to 30 kids that she has in her class at any given time. The lunch and recess aids is just about giving those teachers additional time where they don't have kids, where they actually have a chance to meet with a colleague. It's not going to be the entire grade level in that school, but they can actually spend more time collaborating and planning and prepping for. So different reasons for those things.
So I know I said that was my last question, but I'm just going to add on to that. So the lunchroom recess aids, I'm assuming they're going to be part-time employees? So are they still five days a week, like seven and a half hours?
They work out to be about a .29, believe it or not. I called it .3 for my own math in my head, but it's about a .3 FTE. Eight times .3, 2.4.
So they're, what's their approximate hours? It's going to be like two hours a day?
Two hours a day, five days a week.
Periods. Okay, that makes sense. All right, I'll yield my time to other members. Thank you.
Does anyone want to go? Mr. Ryder?
So the $1.4 million, if we don't get it from the state in a line, as an alliance check, we're getting it from the town.
Correct.
And what assurances do we have of that?
Many conversations in public is about the only assurance I can give you.
Because without that, we're back to like 2.46, and do we, do we, do we not do everything here in gray? Everything under 1.443501?
So when we identified them, when we identified the items that needed to be included in the alliance grant funding, we went through and looked at the actual grant application itself because you have, there's certain things you can only utilize it for. You can't supplant, it all has to be a supplement to what you have. So I had to find items that we didn't already have, that were going to be additional to next school year. So really, what we'd be looking at is, yeah, starting to take back the additional items that we included in next year's budget. So those would be the items that we would be looking at. I would, we would probably have to make some adjustments to it, to be honest with you. Because like the EduClima software?
Right.
We're already, that's going to already be coming in. Like, we're going to need to get going on that before. So we would have to replace that with something else that would be one of those other items that we brought in.
Yeah, that was one that I was looking at specifically because I know we're already doing work to get to being able to utilize this software. But without the money to pay for it, potentially. That's my concern.
Yep.
Anybody else? Ms. Pickett?
I'm just going to piggyback on Mr. Ryder's comments. One is, I'm incredibly concerned that there isn't some type of formalized agreement between the town saying that they will give us our full ECS amount. We had to write a full MOU about money being paid back. I think it would be helpful.
Which we did.
Which we did, on their request. So over and over again, we keep hearing, we don't know why we have this. It was on the town council request that the MOU was drafted. I would like to request a formal document sharing that we will get our full ECS amount. The other thing that I will just share, it is 2.46. Holding the $1.4 million, it's like, that's not how towns budget. It should be an additional set of funds that EPS gets directly from the state. And the town trying to package this in their, their give to us is erroneous and not accurate. That's actually money from the state. So I think it's really important that the town hears clearly. It is a 2.46% increase, not a 4.32% increase. And I think the other thing folks need to hear very cloud, clearly, is that this is necessary in specialized staff. There's not a lot of, there isn't district-wide impact. There are schools who are getting no additional staffing with this budget. So I think we need to just keep that at the forefront.
Anybody else?
Well, I mean, I guess we can definitely ask, Mr. Macio, you could send a request to Mr. Bronson, if he's still there, to just put it in, just put it in writing for us that we'll get the 1.4. And I guess if we don't, worst-case scenarios, we sue the town for the money that they promised us. I mean, I don't really.
Yeah, I mean, to add to that, like procedurally, because they already appropriated the budget with that amount that includes ECS, like if for any reason the state reduced the ECS and they wanted to reduce us, they would have to re-vote and go through that process to change the appropriation. So I, I mean, you know, anything's possible, but I see highly unlikely that even if the ECS amount changed, that the town would then re-vote to change that. I think they would be comfortable enough, and I know in previous years, maybe going back to like 2016, the ECS amount was reduced a certain amount, and the town just didn't change the appropriation for the BOE, just up the municipal revenue to compensate for that part. Because again, our overall general fund that comes from the town, it's about two-thirds municipal revenue, and then a third from the state anyway through that equalization grant. So I, you know, I wouldn't necessarily get too worried that that wouldn't happen.
I would, that night where they appropriated the amount was a very long night, and I just cannot recall in this exact instant the motion exactly the way it was made, because there was a lot of conversation. So I'll go back and look at that as well, because if they made the motion where that was all spelled out, then I think, then we have it in the minutes. But I'm not sure, so I'll verify that.
Yep. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so then I need a motion to approve the fiscal year '25, '26 budget as, to adopt it as appropriated by the town council. I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gauss, seconded by Ms. Cushman. Any more discussion? Mr. Kober?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, bulk of my comments. So I'm not thrilled with all the work that the board put in in the original budget. After the council approved these appropriations over two weeks ago on May 12th, we didn't get the superintendent's revised proposal until 5:00 PM Friday before a holiday weekend as of currently, and it seems like it was confirmed, this is not posted online yet, nor was it even included in our meeting packet to give it ample time for public digestion. Prior to this even coming, our agenda for the revised vote, we did not have another meeting of the board, we had no budget or special workshop, and there was no healthy dialogue between the full board of the nine members. Nonetheless, here we are. I made most of my comments on the budget several months ago, and I did kind of hint that we would very likely end up around the 4% number, which seems where we've ended up. I think as a board, we must take a reasonable and prudent approach when we are looking at things such as increasing staffing members, especially as we've seen trends of declining enrollment and no significant increase in our funding from either the state or the local authorities. As I feel as a board, we should throttle back in our desire to add certain positions after we had to encounter last year's reduction in force. We've heard that the budget has a lot of assumptions, and there are still a lot of unknowns as we move into the next fiscal year. The notion of priority requests by tiers from the administration originally, I know I mentioned, and I'll echo again, seems more sustainable if that was part of a multi-year plan, that the tiers could be incorporated into steps each year rather than the initial four steps trying to get crammed into this first year. I think we need to pre-plan accordingly, be strategic and calculated, especially when it comes to our contingency and non-lapsing fund. I know personally regarding the additional appropriation of the $234,266 from May 19th, instead of using any of that money to hire additional staff at this point, I think those funds should be moved from personnel line items and put them in the 900 line item for next year as a cushion in case we run into any of those issues. You know, in regards, and we talked about the alliance grant, the 1.4 million, I don't foresee us losing that. So I know when we talk about 2.46, the total expenditures are still going to be the same, whether it's general fund or whether it's coming from that way. So I don't see us getting increased revenue by kind of exploring that. I think what we have is what we have, and we need to make do for the next year. But again, those are kind of my concerns with trying to be aggressive with recalling and hiring rather than planning a contingency for next year, especially after this year we were able to see a healthy budget at the end of the year. So those will conclude my comments.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please. Mrs. Akri?
Mrs. Akri?
Yes.
Dr. Kalman?
Yes.
Mrs. Cushman?
Yes.
Mr. Gauss?
Yes.
Mr. Cover?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Pickett?
No.
Mr. Rider? Chairwoman Riley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to board committee reports. Curriculum Committee.
Mr. Flynn and Ms. Sarah Brown discussed some of the changes and fill we'll be making to the JFK reading classes for next school year. Mr. Flynn explained that currently our reading teachers at JFK support students in reading through a course called Assistant Reading. Mr. Flynn further explained that he would like to add another reading course that uses scientific research-based interventions and provides an opportunity for students to focus on the development of their reading skills. This new structure would allow us to better serve our students who need support, and also allowed us to reach more of the students. To accomplish two levels of this particular type of reading class, the current Assistant Reading Class would be renamed Strategic Reading. Strategic Reading would use the current curriculum, which focuses on using reading strategies to increase students' proficiency and comprehension. So the new course with the research-based interventions would now be Assisted Reading. The curriculum used would be Levelled Literacy Intervention. He explained that students are placed into these classes, the Strategic and Assistant Reading Classes, based on their performance the previous year in reading intervention or by data gathered through classroom performance diagnostics or universal screenings. Mr. Flynn also talked about the ESOL classes. He explained that our current ESOL curricular secondary resources from National Geographic are a bit outdated, not engaging for the students. The company has since updated these resources, adding additional support, especially for newcomers, and making the materials more age-appropriate and culturally relevant. Relevant, sorry. Mr. Flynn feels that this will help with both engagement and student achievement in these secondary reading classes. The next meeting for the Curriculum Committee would be June 19th.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Finance Budget Committee. Mr. Cover?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Finance and Budget Committee has not met since our last meeting as of May 5th. Just one thing I want to note, as from our recent weekly update from the superintendent, as of last Friday, the projected surplus variance for our current FY '24-'25 budget is looking at about 1.64 million. So with the current budget, there's plans for pre-purchased expenses in the coming weeks to ensure that this non-lapsing fund at the end of the current year does not exceed the 2% cap. So out of our current $77,429,555, our 2% cap would be $1,548,591.10. So we will have to end below that in order to not exceed our 2% cap. And the next scheduled meeting of the Finance and Budget is Monday, June 2nd at 5:00 PM.
Mr. Cover? Policy Committee?
Since our June policy meeting would fall on the same day as graduation, it was canceled. And so our next meeting will not be until Tuesday, September 16th at 5:30.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman. Leadership Committee, our next meeting is June 4th. Liaison reports, school reports, and updates. Who would like to go? Mr. Rider?
So Eli Whitney, as I mentioned, is having their field day tomorrow. Just a quick couple of notes, if you're still watching, Whitney Wolves, friends and family, make sure you wear your sneakers and field day shirt tomorrow. Bring a towel, bring your water bottle and a change of clothes. Thank you to all of our parent volunteers and townwide volunteers who have signed up to help. Thursday, June 5th, at Eli Whitney, the Hazardful Memorial School second graders will be visiting to see their new school, which is where they'll be attending in August, end of August. Friday, June 6th, at Eli Whitney, our fifth graders will be taking their annual field trip to Sturridge Village. On Monday, June 9th, we'll have our year-end awards ceremony in the morning, and then the fifth grade celebration will begin after lunch. And that's it for Eli Whitney. See you in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Rider. Anybody else? Mr. Cover?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll start out with my usual shout-out to Henry Barnard, friends and family. Please note, for school-specific, the attendance check-ins via Parent Square began today. We ask parents continue to use the main phone line and report any absences. However, if you are registered in Parent Square, as we are becoming a pilot, it will now alert you and allow you to acknowledge the absence and enter a note regarding your child's absent. As of this very moment, field day is still scheduled for this Thursday, the 29th. However, there is a chance of rain being tracked. So the final call, whether or not it will be held on Thursday or rescheduled to the rain date, will be made by Principal Graham sometime around noon tomorrow. If it is rescheduled, it will be Monday, June 2nd. Either day it occurs, anybody that's a volunteer for the morning or the all-day, we ask you to report outside the gym between 9:00 and 9:25. Any volunteers that are doing afternoon only, we ask you to report between noon and 12:35. As Mr. Rider mentioned for the other field day, please ensure your students dress appropriately. Sneakers are required, water bottles are strongly encouraged, spare clothes and a towel are recommended. Other events to highlight for Barnard include a Grade 2 visit to Crandall. This was rescheduled, now it's occurring tomorrow, the 28th. Grade 2 is also doing their field trip Fri, this Friday, the 30th. Regarding Henry Barnard, Friends and Family Night, Wednesday, June 4th, will be Lucky Bob the Magician. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Dr. Kalman?
From Kite, on June 4th, Kite will be holding its last meeting of the year, at which time it will conduct its annual self-assessment. And this assessment will be based on data generated from a questionnaire disseminated to all active Kite members earlier this month. The discussion will be led by Leanne Bullier, who is the former director of Kite, and David Bechtel, who has been a Kite consultant for many years. With respect to Head Start, Head Start conducted its semi-annual health review on May 22nd. The discussion was led by Jennifer Mayer, the nurse. Issues reviewed included dental health, nutrition, BMI monitoring, auditory and visual screening, vaccination status, and dental care. The next meeting of the Health Committee will be in the fall. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Ms. Akri?
From Prudence Crandall, Mr. Dupere says, "We're excited for field day this Friday. However, the weather forecast isn't looking ideal at the moment, so please be aware that there is a possibility of postponement. A final decision will be made on Thursday morning, and we'll notify you through Parent Square." Last Friday, Prudence Crandall School had the pleasure of welcoming author Stephen Swinburne for a special visit. He spoke to students about the importance of believing in yourself, the dedication it takes to become an author, and the value of perseverance. His engaging presentation inspired many young minds. A group of students selected based on their outstanding projects had the unique opportunity to enjoy lunch and a more personal conversation with Mr. Swinburne. It was a memorable and motivating experience for all involved. The fifth grade moving up ceremony is scheduled for Wednesday, June 11th at 10:00 AM. This special event celebrates the accomplishments and growth of our fifth grade students as they prepare to transition to middle school. Fifth grade families are invited to join us in honoring their hard work, achievements, and the exciting journey ahead. And on Wednesday, May 28th, our school will welcome second grade students for an exciting visit. During their time here, they'll have the opportunity to meet some of the teachers, take a guided tour of the school, and participate in a fun activity hosted by the third grade classes.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Anybody else? I just want to say for JFK that their tickets are on sale for the eighth grade formal on Parent Square. You have to join on Parent Square, the link to that, and then you can buy tickets. They're $10, so I thought that was a pretty reasonable price. And the yard signs for the eighth graders are going to be coming out, and you'll be able to pick them up on, I can't remember the date, but we all got an email if we bought the signs. So pick them up if you can. Joint Facilities, I know I commented before about the new deputy director, but other things happened at Joint Facilities. The Alcorn Roof is going out to bid in less than a month or so. The Parkman Roof reimbursement was approved by the state at 70.71%. So now they need the schematic and conceptual review to happen in the next few months before we go back to state with that. DPW wants to be invited to, and have involvement with the school construction, with the Pre-Referendum Committee, so that they have a better idea of when things go out about mechanicals and, you know, flooring and things like that, that they're going to have to do upkeep on, so they have, you know, at least input on that. We talked about the TikTok challenge, which was a vibrant discussion, to say the least, and hopefully that won't occur again. And the next meeting for Joint Facilities is?
June 12th.
June 12th, okay. Joint Insurance Committee, we had a meeting today. Seth from Lockton came. We've got a nice little packet here on the renewal projection, how claims came in. There's also information on fees and rebates, and some options to consider about medical and prescription solutions. Yes?
I did not receive an invite to that meeting.
You did, because I have it right here.
I looked on my calendar, right here.
Yeah, there's an X on yours, but it shows 13 invitees, and I have your name on it.
I have nothing in my inbox and nothing on my calendar.
I'm looking at the invite right now.
Yeah, but I can show you that. I have nothing in my inbox and nothing on my calendar.
I don't know how you didn't get it. It's there. I'm sorry if you didn't get it.
So can I have an update? Is there extra booklets that I could get?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. No problem. And then the next meeting is going to be September? Oh, man. Hold on. Right. September 23rd at 2:00 PM.
We're also having Lockton out to work directly with the Board of Education regarding the upcoming teacher negotiations. So I'll be sending that invite out.
Joint Security?
Next meeting scheduled for June 13th.
And Field Mental Health Committee?
Next meeting to be determined in September for the new school year.
And Pre-Ref Committee?
The next meeting will be June 11th, where the RFP booklets will be reviewed and the scoring sheet will be used at that meeting.
Did you guys get to pick up your booklets with the two architects from Randy? Yeah?
I have not picked mine up just yet.
Okay. Because we got them at the last Pre-Ref meeting. He handed them out, so definitely get them before we have the next meeting. I think you can just pick them up here, is what I think the email had said.
Here, Town Hall?
Thank you.
Town Hall Finance Department, I believe, has them all.
So I need approval of the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes on May 13th, 2025. Any motion?
So moved, and just as an alibi, I think there was like one or two typos. I got an email at recording clerk, but no substance changes, so, so moved.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Cover. I need a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Rider. Any further discussion? Show of hands in favor. Nine in favor, none against? Okay. Approval counts and payroll, do we have any?
No, no items for this month, Madam Chair.
Mr. Rider, do we have correspondence and communications?
Nothing that wasn't included into our packet.
Okay, thank you. No need for executive session tonight, so I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Cover. Second by Ms. Akri. Show of hands in favor, nine in favor, none against. Thank you, and have a good night.